Will the March 5, 2014, meeting of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission please come to order? Thank you all for your attendance this evening. For the benefit of those present who may not have participated in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, I will review our public hearing procedure, which is as follows. We will read the legal notice for the public hearing portion of this meeting. It's published in the local newspaper. The applicants will then be invited to come forward to present their case explaining to the commission and the public what is specifically being requested of the subject property. Written comments from town agencies pertaining to the application will then be read into the record if the commission has received any. The commissioners will then ask their clarifying questions, and then the public will be invited to ask any questions they have about the application. After that, I will then ask those in attendance who support the application to please come forward and make their statement, and then I will ask those who oppose the application to please come forward and make their statements for the commission. As this is a public hearing, it will be necessary for those coming forward to ask questions or speak for or against any application to please identify themselves and state their name and address for the record prior to proceeding. At the conclusion of all statements from the public and the applicant, I will close the public hearing on each application. The applicants and the public are then free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting, at which time the commission will discuss each application under consideration and try to reach a decision. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decisions of this commission. The applicant and/or any aggrieved party with legal standing will have the right to appeal this decision to Superior Court within the statutory timeframe if they so desire. All decisions reached this meeting will be available to the public the next day by either visiting or calling the Planning and Zoning Office after 9:30. Seated this evening are the following Guilford Planning and Zoning Commissioners: David Grigsby, Walter Corvier, Amre Bauer, Frank DeAndrea, Josh Hirschman, Richard Meyer. Staff present this evening is George Kroll, the Town Planner; Katie is our Recording Secretary, and Shannon Gale is the Videoographer. Will the Secretary please read the legal notice?
Legal notice: Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission notices hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on March 5, 2014, at 7:30 PM at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, Menon, Kentucky, Room 2nd floor, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, for the following purposes: One, Palatello, Elizabeth and Mike, 324 Tanner Marsh Road, map 75, Lot 19, Zone R5, special permit for a home handicraft industry, Section 273-38B. Number two, Alfredi, Christine, 130 Leets Island Road, map 21, Lot 27-1, Zone R5. Coastal area management site plan revision allows stairway access to deck and house, Section 273-91. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the office of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Hall South, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. At this hearing, persons may attend and be heard, and written communications will be received. Dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this 12th day of February 2014, Ray Bauer, Chairman.
Thanks very much, Walter. First application this evening is Elizabeth and Mike Palatello, 324 Tanner Marsh Road. This is a special permit for a home handicraft industry. Will you be presenting?
Yes.
Please, if you could just, sure, if you would like to just come over here so you can be on the camera and just state your name and address prior to proceeding, and then just let us know what you'd like to do.
My name is Elizabeth Palatello, 324 Tanner Marsh Road. I am aspiring to open a custom cake business, one-of-a-kind handmade product by appointment only. Just working on my own, no other employees, no signage outside of my house, and a commercial kitchen.
Okay. We have a few letters in the file. Let me go through those first before we start with the questions. The first one's from Dennis Johnson, Director of Health, dated March 5 regarding this application. The applicant's proposed home handicraft industry does not conflict with septic system design for the property. In addition, we did receive a letter from Kevin McGee, the Town Environmental Planner, dated March 3. The application is proposing to install a 480-square-foot kitchen addition. The kitchen is being installed up gradient to wetlands, however, outside of the 100-foot wetlands review zone. The plans provided do not show soil and/or erosion control measures. In order to make sure that the wetlands are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. Number one, soil and erosion control measures shall be installed down slope of the construction to protect the adjacent wetlands from siltation. And number two, the Town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to site construction. Soil stockpiles shall be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Questions from the commission? I guess I'll start. Are you doing any construction outside, or like putting an addition on, or?
Yeah, we actually are doing an addition once we have plans.
Okay.
Upstairs, a master bathroom renovation and a closet.
Okay, and are you familiar and okay with the soil erosion control measures?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Did the applicant get a copy of this, George?
I don't gather not, but that's a fairly routine thing associated with any construction.
Okay.
You're having a contractor do the work, right?
We have a permit that's closed.
We have a permit for the addition. The addition was constructed, went through zoning without a problem. We are now applying on the first floor to put in a second kitchen so that she can run her business from that second floor.
So you're only doing work inside?
Inside.
So you're not doing anything outside?
No. It's already been done.
Right, so it doesn't sound like we need these conditions, then, right, George?
No.
Okay, I'm glad we got that squared away. All right, questions from the commission?
I guess I have one for staff. Once this is approved, she is actually allowed to have employees, even though she currently does not plan to have employees. Is it correct to say that she's allowed to have one or two, or possibly three, employees in the house?
I think the zoning regulations allow two non-resident employees.
And that would be allowed even once we approve this?
Unless you approve it with some kind of a condition that says you couldn't have that. The building addition evidently, I wasn't aware, doesn't require approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission. What requires your approval is the conduct of this home handicraft business in the home.
In a residential zone?
Right.
Now, they're allowed to have two employees as a right unless we change that, but if they want three, they need to come back.
Correct.
Or get a very answer to something.
Unless they're family members, I think. None, other than family.
So they could have, they have five kids.
Yeah, so.
So I think the business would have to grow quite robustly.
Let's hope it does.
So if you qualify, you have to come back to us if you're not using relatives.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commissioners at this point? Are there any commissions, questions from the public? Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of the application? Sir?
My name is Paul Leahy. I live at 329 Tanner Marsh Road. The last name is A.Y.O.T.T.E. For this application, my wife and I are in favor of the board's approval, and the reason is very simple. It's a low-impact business, low traffic flow, it's by appointment only, there's adequate parking there, there will be no negative visual impact in the neighborhood. The addition is architecturally pleasing, professionally landscaped, and historically there's been a number of in-home businesses in the area, including a cake decorating business. I respectfully submit this.
Thank you very much. If you could just give Katie that, we'll make it part of the record. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody wishing to speak against the application? Any questions from anyone, either in the public or on the commission? Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing on this matter, and we'll move on to, thank you, to Christine Alfredi. This is a CAM site plan revision to allow stairway access to a deck and a house at 130 Leets Island Road. Eric, you're going to present?
Yes.
Okay.
..................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Do you want me to read that now, Eric, and then you can respond to it?
I know there's also a letter, I don't know if it's in the filing or not, from Reggie Reed, the Land Management Officer, who gave permission to place in this position an inland wetland, which is here, a few feet. There are also...
No, we don't have that one. At least I don't have it.
We don't have that.
I have the one from Kevin, but not the from Reg.
Then, there also is a letter from the general owner, Dr. John Sotaro, who's owned this property here, and if you have that letter in your file?
Nope.
But it's attributed to the commissioners, Planning and Zoning Office 50, Boston Street, Guilford, regarding John F. Christine P. Alfredi, the revised coastal area management application. Ladies and gentlemen, because of professional obligations, I'm not able to attend the 5 March 2014 planning and zoning commission party hearing. We'd be grateful if you would agree to read the following statement at the hearing. "I have reviewed the revised coastal area management application of John F. Christine P. Alfredi for a new house at Leets Island Road, second map 21, Lot 27.1. As an attendee, I find this application totally acceptable and offer no objection to it. Therefore, in please to support this application. I thank Mr. and Mrs. Alfredi and the representatives for the courtesy and kindness in keeping us informed regarding applications and plans. Respectfully submitted, John F. Sotaro, M.D."
Okay, we do have the original in the file, so that is part of the record.
Well, you do have that.
Yeah. David, you have the file, right, the original? Okay.
I don't know if you need a copy of Reggie Reed's letter regarding the inland wetlands, but that's dated.
Is that dated, what you're doing? Is that dated the 31st of January?
It is dated the 31st, yes.
You want to read it, David, or just?
It's dated January 31, 2014, from Reggie Reed, Inland Wetland Enforcement Officer. On January 30, 2014, upon inspection, the Guilford Inland Wetland Enforcement Officer approved the way the activity to add a deck and egress stairway as shown on coastal area management site plan and sanitary system design, property of Christine P. Alfredi, Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission's 100-foot upland jurisdiction review of a wetland and/or water correspondence or near your property at 130 Leets Island Road. This is right across from...
This is...
This regulated activity is approved based upon the finding that there's no feasible and prudent alternative to completion of this project. You're responsible for providing, publishing the legal notice. Your motion to appeal has 15 days to do so.
Good. While we're at it, let me just read Kevin McGee, the Town Environmental Planner's letter dated March 3, as to the record. "The applicant is proposing to modify his previous application approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its May 15, 2013 meeting. The proposed modification of adding an exterior staircase to a deck is minor in nature compared to the overall reconstruction of the property. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected during the construction process, I recommend that the commission's conditions of approval from May 15, 2013 remain in effect for this modification." All right. Are you finished, Eric, with your presentation, or do you have more you'd like to do before we go to questions?
I feel I said enough.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Eddie, questions from the public? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak against the application?
I have a question. If you say the stairway areas are a total added area of 200 square feet, and your plan says added area for deck access 50 square feet, are we talking about two different things?
Uh...
How do you get 200 square feet?
Yeah, there is another stair area over here, on the other side, but that's not sort of too...
Okay, stairway area is total, so that's something else outside of wetlands.
Okay. Any further questions? Anything else from the public? Any comments or any questions? Okay, hearing done. I'll close the public hearing on this matter, and we will move on to, thank you, Eric, Philip, and Lauren Camp, 299 Old Satcham's Head Road. CAM site plan for the demolition and construction of a new residence related to construction activities and a new septic system within 100 feet of a critical coastal resource.
For the record, my name is Mark Young. I'm a land grabber of Waldo Associates, representing Philip and Lauren Camp. Let's see, this property is on Old Satcham's Head Road. On this plan, this is 1 inch equals 20 feet. There's an existing house here. There's actually four parcels of land. It was subdivided back in the '50s, I guess. The Camp family has owned the property since the late '60s. It's configured in actually four parcels. One here, 1,000 square feet. This parcel here, about 12,000 square feet, another parcel of 10,000, and this strip which, I wish the driveway is, which is, I don't have the square feet, but this parcel is actually owned in common with the joiner here, Chaffron. Prior to application for billing permit, these two parcels will be merged, so that this house will be on one parcel. Now, a little background here, because this is lot R5, because there's insufficient frontage for an R5 lot, this is considered an interior lot. We have applied for variances for the prop done setbacks. We were granted a 30-foot variance for the house, so the house can be 20 feet from the sideline. We were granted a 40-foot variance for the garage, so the garage could be 10 feet from the sideline. Now, as part of this project, we have designed a new septic system, which will be in this area. That's been reviewed and approved by the health department. As we are a direct waterfront, we have a number of coastal resources to consider. There's a shellfish concentration area out in the bay, nearshore waters are here. The shoreline here is rocky shorefront, and there are intertidal flats, again, in the bay. Additionally, it's land above the flood zone, could be considered shoreline, and that's all along the shoreline here. We've specified, to protect the coastal resources during construction, we specified silt fence and hay bales at the edge of the disturbance. Those will remain in place during the entire construction process, and we have a note requiring that, these will be inspected by the zoning enforcement officer prior to any construction. Additionally, we feel that the new septic system will provide additional protection to the coastal resource by preventing any possible overflow from the existing substandard septic system. We did consider views of the coastal resources from the public street here. There really aren't any views. The driveway rises up here. You stand in the street, all you can see are the treetops. So views in the public are really not a big concern here. We had some fairly extensive correspondence with Kevin McGee, and as a result, we put a number of notes on here. In particular, I mentioned the erosion control, how that is inspected. The parking area here will be a gravel pave or a gravel surface, and Kevin has asked that we have a professional engineer supervise that installation to make sure that it's spelled properly, and we have a note to that effect down here. So I think, yeah, overall, the house will blend in with the neighborhood, will have no adverse impact on the coastal resource. There will be no construction activity within the 25-foot resource setback here, so shoreline will be unchanged, and I think it's going to be a pleasant home for Philip and Lauren Camp. Now, we have specified a fairly extensive stormwater treatment system. Rob Sonnixon is here and will address some of those issues.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening. My name's Rob Sonnixon. I'm a registered professional engineer, and I work with Waldo and Associates. Stormwater management on residential projects is something that we run into. I think that we do much more of it in the coastal area than is done in man locations. This is a small lot. We're used to doing commercial designs, but there are a few guiding principles that we use on the stormwater design in these coastal areas. One of them is to try to replicate the existing conditions. We don't want to increase runoff from any of the impervious surfaces that we're going to be proposing, and we want to encourage infiltration. One of the issues on a small lot, and this is a small lot, is there really isn't any room to do an open feature. So what we've chosen is underground stormwater storage units that are going to be located at six different locations around the property. The first one is located in the corner of the driveway area. I want to add, and Mark mentioned it before, the other thing that we're doing is we're limiting to the extent that we can impervious surfaces. So the driveway area is going to be gravel paved. It's a permeable pavement or gravel, so it's not going, that limits the amount of impervious surface to, essentially to the rooftops of the buildings is the additional impervious surface. And our design is done in such a way that we mitigate for any increases caused by the impervious surfaces. So the first stormwater galleries are in the corner of the driveway area. They catch trench drains from the existing driveway. Currently, there's some stormwater that runs off onto the adjacent property. We're going to pick it up and put it in an underground storage system to prevent that from continuing to happen. They're going, all of the systems are going to be interconnected. The second system and, the second system's going to provide runoff from the garage roof. The third system is going to take care of the corner of the house, and the fourth system is going to take care of the front corner of the house. It's another good plan to not concentrate everything in one location, but to spread it out. Once again, that helps to replicate existing conditions. There's a terrace in front of the house. The terrace is going to flow into a long gravel-filled trench that is at the toe of the terrace slope, and also the overflow from the storage units are all going to be connected into that trench. It's going to serve like a big, long level spreader, so we don't get concentrated flow down the emmagment that could potentially cause some erosion. It's a stable shoreline, but you still don't want to concentrate the flow. So those are the highlights of the storm drainage system. We worked extensively with Kevin and John Goucher from the Office of Long Island Sound Programs. We incorporated all of Mr. Goucher's recommendations in our stormwater system, and we've reached, we've received his endorsement for our design. We think that it's going to be a good one, and it's going to protect against any kind of damage or negative impact, either from water quantity of runoff or the quality of the water that's running off the site into Long Island Sound. And that completes my presentation, and I'm going to turn it over now for a brief presentation from our architect, Nathan Top, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. One moment, change the prompts. My name is Nathan Top, and I'm the architect of record. I've had the...
Just your location of your office, please?
Woodbridge, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you.
I've had the pleasure and the honor of working with the camps on this new residence. As Mark had talked about earlier on, there's an existing small cottage that will be taken down, and we are replacing that small cottage with a four-bedroom home, new home for the camps. The home is basically going to be a shingle-style house, which is a style of architecture that's very well-known in this area and very sympathetic to both existing and new construction in Guilford and certainly along the waterfront. Our skin will be a wood shingle, treated with clear wood shingle, or roofs are going to be treated with shingles. We've got some copper roofing on some of the small roofs up on top, but basically what we're looking at is we're looking at as close to a true shingle-style design as we can come. As you can see, we've sort of created a plinth for the house, because the house is really on a very steep slope, and when you pull into the driveway coming from the street itself, the house really presents itself as a one-and-a-half, almost two-story house, but as it goes down the slope, it really gains a little more elevation to it and sort of steps down, I hope gracefully with the land itself, and really addresses the water and the views at the front of the house as it really should. We, let's see, in terms of square footage of the house, the main level footprint is 3,800 square feet. The upper-level footprint is approximately 2,450 or 2,500 square feet. We also have a, this up here, we also have a detached garage as part of our proposed construction, which is right down here. The garage sits at just below 690 square feet, and it has a second-story storage level, which is about, let's see, about 350 square feet above that. There will not be an occupied space, it will be a storage space, but we do articulate the elevation, because it's part of a courtyard, and we want to be able to gracefully bring people into the house and not have the garage be this tertiary... people into the house and not have the garage be this tertiary building on the property. Lot coverage, we are allowed 20 percent, we're proposing 13.2 percent. Total floor area, we're allowed 50 percent, we're proposing 33.5 percent. With regards to height calculations, we're all within specified height calculations with regards to the house. The average grade calculation came out to 47 feet. Maximum height allowed is 35 feet, or elevation 82. We're proposing the house at elevation 81. As far as the garage, the average grade is 58 feet, maximum height 20 feet, and we're proposing that the maximum height there is 78 feet, so we're taking a full 20 feet at that point. Some of you might be saying, we have some projections above the roof. Light wells and populas, as we understand through discussions with Reggie, are allowed. We do not have any additional living area underneath those populas or light wells, and they're solely there to literally bring light into the center of the house itself. I think that's it.
Okay. Before we start with the questions, let me just read a few letters that we've received. The first one is from John Goucher, environmental analyst for the Office of Long Island Sound Programs, state of Connecticut. Dated March 3rd, we have received the above-referenced proposal revised to February 14, 2004, to construct a single-family residence for consistency with Connecticut Coastal Management Act policies, and have no comments for the planning and zoning commission's consideration. In addition, we have a letter from Dennis Johnson, director of health for the town of Guilford, dated February 19th. The applicant's proposed house addition will require installation of a new septic system. Soil tests conducted on the lot on August 2nd, 2010, revealed a suitable area to enable construction of a septic system in accordance with the Public Health Code. Based upon soil test results and site plan review, it is recommended that the applicant's proposed use be approved as depicted on a plan dated March 3rd, 2014, revised by Waldo and Associates. In addition, we have a letter from Kevin McGee dated the 3rd. Kevin's the environmental planner for the town of Guilford. The information provided indicates that the existing house will be removed. In a new house, septic system and stormwater management system will be constructed on the property. The stormwater management system consists of a permeable paver parking area and an underground infiltration system designed to infiltrate the water from the catch basins in the building roof gutters. The terrace is proposed to be constructed just outside of the effective July 8, 2013 FEMA flood zone VE. The general sequence of construction is shown on the plans, provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected during the construction process, I recommend the following conditions of approval. Number one, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation control measures prior to any demolition or site regrading. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable materials installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Number two, the construction of the permeable paver parking area shall be supervised by a licensed engineer, and a report be provided to the zoning enforcement officer prior to the issuance of a certificate occupancy indicating that the parking area was properly installed. Okay, questions from the commission?
We're in R-5 zone, right? We're slowly walking through your height again. We're having a tough time following the map.
Thirty-five feet maximum, right? Thirty-five feet maximum. Taking the average grade around all points, which I did not bring the breakdown of the population, so we'll put this up. What we did is, we, the zoning describes 10-foot distance out from the corner, each of the corners of the house itself. So we came out 10 feet, actually in both directions. In some areas, we came a diagonal 10 feet, and we did that around the perimeter of the main house, and that average, let me try that again, that average height or the average grade came out to 47 feet. And part of the issue why we were brought down so low is because of how steep the slope is itself, and the water side of the site, which is this area back over here, really brought that calculation down. So, one of the reasons why we really had to-
Yeah, absent your calculations, I'm not sure how to get the real answer, but sure looks like the front of the house, the elevation of the dirt, your finished grade, I'm not sure if that would be different than what there-
No, we're really trying hard to keep the existing contours intact.
So that's 54 feet. You're showing me that the height of the roof, not taking into account these, you're saying are exempt, 81 feet.
Correct.
So that's 27 foot in front of the house. Sure looks like the rest of the house drops away in a hurry. When you look at that side elevation, it goes down a lot.
It does go down a lot, without a doubt, but the average grade again, at the, around the perimeter-
No, I'm asking, I'm saying I'm looking at it, and absent your calculations, I don't know how you get your numbers.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
No, no, no. The way we got our numbers was getting the average grade in all the corners of the house. There is a calculation, Mark, there's a calculation on the drawing itself.
Where, where are we?
So we have the breakdown.
On this one?
Here we go. Right there. So this is the breakdown in the four corners, the average grade.
Okay. Here and here, all right, I'll do the math now. Northwest, which one's northwest?
There's north up here, so the, like, up that way.
Northwest is 38. That's north, and that's west, you're saying it's 38?
Okay, yeah, yeah. I'm with you. No, I'm not with you.
Okay. Got some calculations here.
Northwest, which one's the northwest corner?
Northwest would be this corner.
Mm-hmm. Here, and you're saying it's elevation 38?
Right, so here's a 38 contour.
Okay.
There's a corner, right off the corner, we've got 38.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I turned around.
Yeah, it's confusing. Northeast corner will be over here.
Okay.
There's the 42 contour.
Okay.
So there's 42 for that one. Southeast is here, 10 feet, we've got 54.
Okay.
Okay. Southwest is here, 10 feet, that's 54 contour also.
Okay.
Okay? So we've got the average, we've got the 47s, maximum peak is 47, the maximum peak-
Okay, I'll do your math in a second.
Yeah.
Well, R-5 zone, floor area, you have 50 percent?
That's allowed.
Is it 40, is it 40 percent or 50 percent?
But you said you've got 33.5 on your actual-
Yes.
33.5.
So, is it 40 percent or 50 percent for floor area?
I don't, I don't have it chart memorized, but-
There do, it's all right.
I believe we did.
So if we're in R-5, I see 40 percent?
40 percent.
40 percent. It's maximum total floor area and floor area. And you've got 50 percent?
We have 90 percent?
We do. Any other errors or-
We're still below it, it's not right. We're proposing 33.5.
I just want to make sure, I know, that's why I'm asking you.
Now, as far as you know, you didn't need any variances for any of the, or did you get some, did you-
We needed no variances for the house itself.
Setbacks. We have, we have two vari, we have two variances that we obtained. Okay. One for the house-
So I just want to make sure we're going with whatever you got the variance at, supposed to, right there.
Okay. We've got a property line setback, this is the interior lot. We've got 30-foot variance, go from 50 feet to 20 feet. So this house is 20 feet in the sidelines.
So those are sideline variances?
Right. Well, it's a property line for interior lot.
Okay.
Okay? And garage, we've got a 40-foot variance, so that's 10 feet for the sidelines.
And help me with the gradation. You talked about how the view lane, if I'm looking at your map, what's the elevation of the road?
The road is at about-
68?
66, 67.
68?
It's about 67, and it's about 70, the high point.
Okay, so-
There really, there really is no view there.
And why is there none of you there?
Because you can't see over the hill.
What hill?
This hill. You go up-
The two-foot hill?
And about three, three or four feet.
Five feet, 10?
You go out there and see.
Well, did we do a sidewalk? I don't think we did.
I don't think we did do a sidewalk on this.
There is no view because, because of the terrain. You know, the contours don't really show it, but that's-
I see 70-foot maximum, you said the road is 67, I see 68, so that's three or two or three feet. I'm just, we didn't do a sidewalk, so I don't know the answer.
Are you saying it goes up and then it goes down?
Yes.
So you can't see the shore, but you can, you see the sky off the top?
You can see, you can see the cottages on Leech Island across the bay, through the trees in the winter.
Where are the trees?
The trees are, you know, on the whole side, yeah.
Also in the front, you have the tennis court, which has got junked out in front of it, and there are trees here, too.
Yeah, tennis court is probably level though, right?
No, the tennis court is actually, I think, above the road.
It's well above the road, yes.
Okay.
Three, four feet above the road, and there's some fairly extensive evergreen trees right next to the town square here. And, you know, there are a number of trees already, you know, on this, this part of the property, where you're putting the septic. Yes.
So you're going to take those down, right? For the septic, you can't have it over the leach fields?
Yeah, correct, a few.
Well, you have one, two, three, are there five gallery, galleys being put in there?
Yes.
You don't show the trees on the site plane, you show a lot of other things on the site plane.
It just got too busy, so I-
It is busy, you have a habit of having a very, very busy site plane.
We try to make them complete, but there's only so much you can fit.
Okay.
All right. Are there any more questions from the commission at this point?
Just a pause.
Yeah, sure.
If a Realtor said there are winter views from Full Sager Road, would he lie?
Okay.
So if I go up there, I'm not going to see the- You will not see the water from the street.
Questions from the public on this application?
Evening, Mr. Bauer, Attorney Tom Cronin, 71 Bradley Rose Madison. And if I could just make just a quick introductory, I'm actually here in support of the project, but I need answers to questions.
Absolutely, ask away.
Okay. I guess where I'd like to start has to do with Commissioner Grigsby, when Grigsby was kind of talking about this, and the architect talked about that the lot being steep. Am I correct that if we take the 70-foot and we drop off to four feet in back for about a 400-foot run, is that about a 15 percent grade? Am I doing the math the right way? If you drop off 66 feet over a 400-foot run, is that about a 15 percent grade?
But the property rises up in between that run.
It's not a uniform slope. I'm actually starting at the high point of 70. Now, the other thing I noticed is that the gradient lines seem to get closer down here. It looks to me like the elevation, is this the, I'll call it the street side of the proposed house, and that's about 54? So we drop down from 70 to 54, that's 16, and is that over a run of about, maybe 250 feet or so, 200 feet? 250 feet? I guess the whole property's about 400 feet deep, and it's about halfway?
Yeah.
So we drop down 15 feet over about 220 or so, less than 10 percent?
Yeah.
If we go from the front of the house to the harbor, we go from 54 to 4, which is a 50-foot drop. Correct. And that's a 50-foot drop that runs over about 200 feet of run, so that's about a 25 percent slope.
Correct.
And there's an infiltrator or some sort of stormwater collection device up here, if I'm not mistaken. That's for the garage?
That's for the garage, yes.
And I couldn't see where Mr. Sonnixon was pointing, but he said there's another one someplace up here around the driveway.
Yeah, there's a, I see it there, picks up the driveways. There's these two here, and this one which are for the house, and they discharge here in this overflow infiltration trench, which also picks up the runoff from the patio.
Now, I can't read architectural drawings for love or money, but I was trying to figure out what the direction was here, so I'll ask the stupid question. Does the ridge line of the roof run the long way of the lot, or does it run this way?
Long way of the lot.
A long way. So half of the house slopes over this way, half the roof runs towards the Chaffro property. And by the way, if I didn't introduce for the record, I am here representing Mrs. Chaffro.
Okay.
I think I might have skipped that.
I'm here on entertainment.
So we have-
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we have basically one collection device over here on this side of the building, and roughly half the runoff goes that way. The, I had an old version of this, and I think this is up to date. So here we have stormwater treatment calculations for the proposed house and driveway and the garage. So we now have, we have calculations for all of those.
That's correct.
But let me just ask, because I just don't really answer to this. If we have a 25 percent slope over here, downward slope, am I wrong to be concerned about how that stormwater is going to be managed and collected, given that half the roof is throwing the water this way? There's only one collection device, and we have a retaining wall that gates off right into the middle of my client's house. I think that that's the $64 question for us. If we can be protected from becoming the accidental co-conspirators here on this development project, such that your gain is our loss, we're on board with this. Right now, the calculations, as I see it, trouble me, and I'm just concerned about how are we managing stormwater over here, given the fact that the bulk of the collection is on this side? We have trees over here, which I imagine may be part of the collection management, these are Leyland cypress or something?
Yeah.
Are they there to help suck up water or-
They're primarily for screening.
Screening.
Okay. Who's, are they there already?
Yes, they are there, they were planted 10, 15 years ago.
And you're correct. But we have what looks like the very smallest part of stormwater collection on this side and a very steep slope. So can someone tell me how Mrs. Chaffro will have some comfort that she won't be flooded out?
Is there someone who can respond to Attorney Cronin's question?
I think the most significant thing is this will overflow down here to our infiltration trench. So when it's full, it's going to run down here. The soil test indicated four feet of soil there, so that should be, you know, that provides a couple of feet of soil underneath the gallery, which should provide sufficient soil for the stormwater to infiltrate and disperse. Also, too, the grade is across this way, that is, the slope is straight down the hill. Water is not going to run sideways over to the Chaffro property, it's going to run straight down the hill. So there, you know, there's a good, you know, several feet before that wall, there's a certain wall, and I think that, you know, there's a quite a bit of soil around there, there's enough soil for the water to soak in, and if the gallery, the chambers do fill up, it'll run down here and not spill out. We've also, on another point, in order to, in consideration of the engineers here, we have specified that surface grading will be generally away from the property line, actually on both sides, and-
So you're going to slope it towards the house?
Okay.
Are you going to slope it towards the house?
It will be slightly towards the house and slightly away from, so it'll actually be-
It's that, it's that, it's that.
Shells that are away and towards, which wouldn't, oh.
Away from them.
It'll be away from the house and away from the property line, so there will actually be a shallow swell going down both sides.
Okay. Can I just ask a follow-up?
Sure, please, go ahead.
A couple of questions. A couple of questions. And I'm very aware this is a coastal site plan thing, so I'm not into variance issues or coverage or any of that stuff. The infiltration, when you do an infiltration calculation, is infiltration influenced at all by the slope over which the water is supposed to infiltrate? So a fifty-foot slope infiltrates at the same rate as a two percent slope?
That, that's not generally considered in stormwater calculations. Usually we size the system to handle the runoff, the increase in runoff due to one inch of rainfall. The, uh, they will, it will infiltrate, you know, as well as it can, and that's why we have the overflow. You know, and it will actually disperse faster on a steep or slow.
And that strikes me as a bit of a catch-22, maybe good news for me and bad news for you. I don't know, but it would seem as though if you swale this, which would protect Mrs. Chaffro, which is what my interest is, I have a bit of a concern that you're accelerating and channeling the flow of water towards the coastal resources.
To the coastal resource.
So I don't know the answer to that. The, I guess there's one other question I had, and it goes to the application, and it's just a substantive question. Are you retaining, does this plan retain the first inch of rainfall on the project? I'm sorry, on the site, post-development site, or on the incremental footprint that's proposed to go on the site?
It's, um, it's, they're tied for the increase in, in...
It's designed for the increase in impervious surface.
And I just don't know, I'm not an expert on the stormwater management manual or what it was to look at.
Did Mr. Portley look at this, George, and did Kevin and John Goucher take this into account?
Kevin and John Goucher, I know that that's something they extensively reviewed and discussed, yes.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions at this time.
Okay. Any other questions from the public? All right, well, then let's see if there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the application?
I guess I got to pick one.
Okay.
Again, for the record, attorney Tom Cronin here for Brenda Chaffro. More often than not, people in my position stand up in favor and then tell you why they're not in favor of it. So I figured I'd stand up opposed and tell you why I'm really not opposed to it. My client, Brenda Chaffro, really has no objection to, no real objection to this project, okay? All she asks this board to do is, as you consider whether or not you're going to approve it, would you give whatever consideration you can to ensuring that she doesn't become the inadvertent co-conspirator on the project here and wind up bearing the burden? Again, I realize that your concern is coastal resources. There should be a way to optimize both concerns. I hope there's a way to optimize both concerns, and that's why...
Do you have a suggestion for a condition or something we should be looking at or including?
Well, to be honest with you, the, and it wasn't clear to me, but if this is going to be swaled in such a way that, that water's not going to go off this way, I'm going to guess that that would, that would benefit my client a great deal.
Unfortunately, we cannot fix it on our...
And I had even an old version of that, David, so I...
I understand, I mean, but, like I said, you tend to have a lot of information, and yet at the same time, we must have pertinent information, so...
Just quickly, Tom, if you, if you take a look at it, these arrows that are shown, and once again, it is busy, there's a lot going on, that's a representation that that area will be graded to drain in that direction, which is a way to show your client's house. The other thing is, and it's all along this way, the other thing I think that's important is the trench drain through the driveway. We're going to prevent any water from coming down the driveway and causing a problem on her, uh, property. Catch it and put it in the underground section here and then run it over here.
I apologize, I didn't see these squiggly lines in North A-Mall. I'm not sure Kellin told you what they mean. Maybe not, I was...
Well, the contractor who's doing the grading knows enough to follow those and grade in that direction, right?
Yes, yes. We will be in contact with them extensively, I'm sure.
And we'd be happy to have a condition of approval that that area would be graded away from this.
Engineer discretion of the...
Okay, another question?
I have a question.
Yes.
The plan looks very nice, looks like a very nice project. My question is the existing house that's there. Demolition of the house. Is there any environmental concerns of tearing down the house, lead paint, asbestos, any issues like that that should be addressed? And is it going to be a licensed demolition contractor that will demolish the house?
Uh, yes, it will be a licensed contractor.
Demolition?
Yes, that's my understanding. And we will have environmental testing prior to any demolition being done. That's, uh, you know, temporary utilities is simple, one environmental testing is number one.
Okay, you don't have a problem with making that a condition of...
Absolutely not, absolutely.
Hi, Vic, can you state your name for the record?
Victor Anatro. Yes, sir.
Can you, George, can you enlighten me, where do we extend cupolas from the height? I think we can remember that idea.
By the definition, perhaps?
Um, not that I see it under height. Height's, that's where the, the document about the building measured from the average natural ground. And then it says, any part, from the maximum height of any part of the structure, see 27331. And 27331 talks about regulations pertaining to height shall not apply to church steeples, barns, and silos accessory to farm. So is it somewhere else?
Did Reggie cite a section when you chatted with her to get the... Oh, okay. What section is that, George, just so David can look it up while you're reading it, too?
Two seventy-three dash thirty-one, exceptions to height requirements, grant some relief to the height imposed on structures, although does not specifically include cupolas. According to Reggie, this section has been used to allow cupolas and light shafts, although the term cupula is not specifically used. So it's based...
So her interpretation...
Is that... This is a letter?
That was more like, more like a discussion right now.
Okay, a summary of a phone conversation that Dirk had with Reggie.
And she's citing two seventy-three thirty-one?
Yeah.
Talks about steeples, barns, silos, chimneys, water towers, and structures housing, heat or heating, ventilation, air conditioning, or similar mechanical equipment located on our roof.
Not to mention examples all over the neighborhood.
Well, I'm asking in the zoning regulations where our authority...
I mean, it doesn't seem like it fits in there, the way it's worded, but if she's interpreted it to include these.
I don't, I can't answer that, she's not here, obviously. There are a couple of options. One would be for the applicant to stipulate right now that they're removing that from the plan. It's subject to further interpretation of this and/or subject to variance. It's obviously not really, it's not really pertinent to coastal site plan review, although the commission, as part of a coastal site plan review, has to certify that it's...
I can't approve the site plan that has...
That doesn't conform, correct.
I start right out, we've been diligent in trying to pursue this issue.
I'm sure, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, and I don't doubt that, I'm just saying that a fair reading of that...
This memo says, according to Reggie, Reggie evidently told Mr. Goss that this section has been used to allow cupolas and light shafts.
And it clearly has. I mean, if it has, then that's been the interpretation for consistency, that, you know, but I have to tell you that it doesn't, my reading of it doesn't seem like it includes it. But having said that, if it's been interpreted that way for years, and other people have been allowed to construct similar structures, with that exception, it's understood, and that's what she said, I mean, I guess... So these are steeples? Well, that's what I mean. I don't, I don't see where it really fits in, and it's certainly not mechanical, which is that other sort of a catch-all category, but, I mean, if she's saying this is how it's been interpreted in the past. All right. I, I guess I have a general, um, question about the current coverage of the cottage and the current garage.
There's no garage currently.
There's no garage currently?
No.
And so currently there is one, there's one cottage on the, not the interior lot, but the...
Well, it's, they're all interior lot, but the cottage is right here.
And what's the lot coverage of this cottage?
Well, the cottage is five thousand square feet. On this particular, this, this one parcel, it's about eight percent. This is twelve thousand square feet.
And then the other parcel currently has no construction?
There are no structures on, on the other parcels, besides the tennis court out here.
Besides the tennis court.
Yeah. As I said, these, these two parcels will be merged.
Right.
To make this work.
And Mark, your number on the merged parcels for the existing cottage is two point eight percent.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicants? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question on the application.
Up, name and address, please.
I need to listen to Darian, Twenty-three Highland Street.
Okay, please.
For my application, by coincidence, the Alfredi project went before this one. Ours is an interior lot, this is an interior lot, they were holding us with thirty-five foot, those three, two foot, coastal setback? Is this, just so I understand, is, I think you have a twenty-five?
Yes, that's because of the existing structure, which is less than fifty feet, I believe, from the coastal resource, therefore, we're held at twenty-five.
No, I was looking into that as well, though. The setback varies depending on what you're, what you refer to as your development depth, which is the distance from the coastal resource to existing conditions, and they are less than fifty feet.
They're less than fifty feet now.
Right now, therefore, they're at twenty-five. You might have been more than fifty, less than a hundred, therefore, it's thirty-five or something like that.
So you're okay with the answer? Okay, good. All right, any other questions or any other input from anybody? I guess I have a couple of elevation questions. We have the one that's on the floor on the top, I think might be the best.
This one down here?
Yeah. What is, sure, this one's fine. What is the elevation of this, um...
Of the surface?
Yes, yeah. Usable outdoor surface.
Forty foot nine?
Forty?
Forty. Forty foot nine.
Forty foot nine, correct. And then what's the elevation here?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one. And then what's the elevation of the cupola, or the...
This, the light wells, this one is eight feet, and this one is, let's say, ten feet, just above the roof.
So forty foot nine to eighty-one, right?
Correct.
Plus ten.
Correct.
So this is about ninety-one foot elevation?
It's about ninety-one.
And this is about forty foot nine. And then here, this elevation is...
And it's here, about thirty, somewhere between thirty-six and thirty-four and thirty-six.
Between thirty-four and thirty-six. And then this is the bottom of the lowest point of the board road.
And then, right, they have a count there for you. Okay. That rear wall varies because of the slope, the person ten foot nine to this point, person thirteen foot nine, which I think is on this side, ten foot nine.
Ten foot nine on the other foot. So from the lowest point of the structure, ten foot nine, to the highest cupola, ninety-one, is a total of eighty feet.
No, 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 this is, this is forty, this is forty minus, let's say, ten.
Forty minus ten, so it's thirty. So this is thirty.
So it's fifty, sixty.
So from thirty, from thirty to, say, ninety, it's sixty.
Yes.
Okay. Further questions? Anything else from the public? David, you all set, or do you have any other questions you'd like to ask the applicant?
Is this an undersized lot that will merge?
For that zone, yeah.
I don't know what the total is, but it's less than forty thousand.
It is less, yes.
Yeah. Can you build a new house on an undersized lot?
It's a, it's a non-conforming lot, yes.
It's a non-conforming lot.
You can build as lo, as long as everything else conforms, unless you get variances, yes.
Which you did get, the two variances for the setbacks. All right, then. Hearing no more, we'll close the public hearing on this matter. And if I can get a motion for the revised agenda? Someone hear a second? All in favor? Okay, first... What were we just revising? I'm in favor of revising. The approval of the revised agenda? Okay.
It's different than what was originally published.
Right. That's... Dully to... I thought they were identical. No, almost always, they're a little bit different. Okay, so first item is the Palatello matter, so if I could please get a motion on that?
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for home handicraft industry for Elizabeth and Mike Alano at three-two-four-Tender Marsh Road, map seven-five, lot nineteen, as shown on application one-twenty-nine-fourteen and heard at a public hearing on March fifth, two thousand fourteen. There are no conditions, and this application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code. The special permit is effective on March fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, and upon filing with the town clerk.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second. Okay, discussion. Well, it sounds like all the construction's really taken place, but this is really, it's just approving the use there, and that's basically it, because it's just interior work. They do have the necessary ability to have up to two employees, so they were made aware of that, and the, the only input from the public was in support of it, so in favor of Green's. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing that, a call for vote, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, that's passed. If I could get a motion on the Alfredi matter?
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a revision to a coastal area management site plan for Christine Alfredi, one-thirty, Lees Island Road, map twenty-one, lot twenty-seven dash one, as shown on coastal area management site plan and sanitary system design property of Christina P. L. Alfredi, dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen, revised the same day, one-twenty-eight, two thousand thirteen, as prepared by Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates. This application is approved with the following conditions: that all conditions of approval from May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, remain in effect. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second. Okay, discussion. Well, very minor change. Pretty much we had approved a majority of it in the past. I didn't, uh, thank... And safer. Yeah, certainly safer. I didn't hear any objections from the public on that, so I guess I'll just call for a vote, then. All in favor? Anybody opposed? All right, moving on to the Philip and Lauren Camp application.
I'm going to excuse myself.
Okay, so Josh is off on this one. Whoever's going to read the motion, I might add that there are two conditions that were discussed, one which, in regard to the grading, to ensure that the grading is away from the adjoining property owners, and then there was also the issue of demolition, using a licensed demolition contractor and taking all the necessary environmental precautions depending on if there's leaded paint or asbestos, et cetera, whatever's found. So I'll ask someone to make the motion. We need to continue this and get a site visit. We haven't, this is, got a lot of complexity to it, and also, from the top of the project to the bottom, it looks like it is sixty feet tall. And I understand that the average is different. There's also at least one substantive mistake in...
There's also at least one substantive mistake in misrepresentation on the plan, which is fifty percent instead of forty percent. And also, it looks like it's eleven times as large as the current structure. We're a little bit once burned, twice shy, because I live over in Indian Cove and it looks as though, you know, on Daniel Avenue, we now have what is technically a one-bedroom home that has created a wall across a full block of people's view to Indian Cove itself, to the actual Cove. And it also actually, the septic system also blocks it because it's got a stone wall around it and it's been raised up next to the home in order to accommodate the fact that it's on rock. Here, we have a lot of different complexities on a single site plan, many of which we can't really have fully reviewed at this point.
Well, I mean, with regard to the forty versus fifty, we could make a condition that the plan be revised to just make it to the correct number. But I'm just not sure, how is, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you with this...
That's right. We could do that for that one.
Right, for that item.
That one error. But I haven't been able to, obviously, you know, this...
But I'm just wondering, how will the site visit answer those other questions you have?
It would be able to answer my question of the site view, the view lanes. I mean, the representation was made, you can't see the water for the trees or the hills or the something. And that may be, in fact, the case. I wouldn't mind knowing that myself, if in fact it's true and there's no reason to doubt that.
No, I agree with that, Dave. I'm just saying, but with your question about the height, I'm not sure how, and the complexity, how just viewing the site's going to help with that. But I can agree with David's observation.
Yeah, the view is a factor. Also, the fact that a few lots are being merged, that they're non-conforming, that we don't really comprehend the current state of the site. And also, there are neighbors who are slightly farther afield who may be very much affected by this. And I'm...
Well, they might be, but they weren't here to dispute it. I'm just trying to, you know, get it, I mean, I don't have a problem going and doing the walkthrough, but I'm just not sure with the issues you raise, how the site, I mean, it will help the question that David raises.
I think understanding the site views and understanding also the height of the structure to the extent that it will affect whatever the site may be.
Well, I understand that, but that's going to be hard to judge how high it's going to be there.
I agree, it will be hard to judge.
It's also hard to judge from this room.
George, would it be possible, the next meeting is what day?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Can we get a site walk in between now and then? Get one scheduled?
Sure.
Okay. Do you have a problem with...
That's up to you.
Well, no, I'm just asking if we can get that scheduled.
We can also reach out to Reggie and ask her to confirm or clarify her interpretation of this question of cupolas and similar structures.
All right. Then what I'm going to suggest then is we would continue this application to the next meeting and schedule a site walk in the interim for any members who wish to do it. I prefer to do it on a Saturday myself, if that works for everybody here. Eight AM, whichever one works the best between now and then, but...
Yeah.
All right, so you'll...
It's easy to schedule it.
Okay, you're going to schedule it?
Pardon me?
You'll schedule it?
All we have to do is post the meeting and hope that you all can be there and hope that we'll absolutely make sure that the architect...
Let's, can you do it this Saturday?
Yes.
I can do it this Saturday, too. Why don't we set it for this Saturday at eight AM in the Town Hall Center South? Could you have someone, would it be possible to have someone there meet us so that we can... Okay, good. Walk us through this with the plans? And then we'll put, continue this to the next meeting and take action.
You're going to meet at Town Hall South or are you going to meet on the site?
Town Hall South would probably be easiest, and we can all go over in one kind of, you know, parking situation.
We could carpool there, not...
That's what I'm worried about, so maybe we can take, we get one of the town cars and we'll just all go over in that and really have to park one. All right, anyone who can show up is welcome to from the commission on this Saturday, eight AM. If we could just send an email out, George, everybody, to remind them.
Okay.
All right, so make a motion. Someone could continue this?
Just let's me, because I brought it up. Move to continue to our next regular meeting. Second.
All in favor? Okay, we're continued on that one. All right, thank you. What I'm going to ask us to do is, I see Mr. Smith is over there waiting patiently, and we do have...
Sir.
Craig Smith? Is Craig Smith still here? Oh, sir, okay.
George, is that something that we want to record?
Sir, do you want to submit that for the record? Why don't you?
Because we do have one of the site plans, which may take a little while, I'd like to do Mr. Smith's, the interpretation of that regulation with regard to the one twenty-six bluff view drive that we spent a lot of time about it. So if I could just ask that we take that up now?
Yeah, move to amend.
Okay. All in favor? No, we're in second. Okay. Okay, just to bring everybody up to speed, this was, we took this up last time. This is the issue where the lot was originally, I believe, an R six. The lot was purchased when it was an R six. It wasn't developed until after the zone was already changed to an R eight. The building was put up and now the gentleman wants to put in a swimming pool. And the question is, does the R eight or the R six zone specifications apply? There was a state statute that sure made it look like this gentleman's interpretation was correct and that he did not need a variance to go forward with it. We agreed at the last meeting, we thought that was probably the case, but we wanted to send that out to Chuck to give us an opinion on it. I had that forwarded to everybody via email, I think it was yesterday or the day before. And I guess the discussion now is, now it's time to make a decision. So based on what we heard back from Chuck, I think the bottom line is that Mr. Smith's interpretation is correct and that we don't need a variance.
I agree.
Okay? Is that pretty much where we came up?
Well, except for the question that I had, was, did we, you know, what the statute says, much to the surprise of any number of learned zoning attorneys who were in on that string of communication with Chuck. Many of them essentially said, gee, this isn't what I think, let me look at it. And they came back and said, huh. And as part of that string, several of the comments were, and all you need to do presumably is to amend and restate your zoning regulations to take care of this. And then at some point Chuck, in his emails, said, well, that all we did was adopt a digital version of our zoning regulations. And in fact, it was more than just a, we didn't just change it from the hard copy to the digital. There were other changes to it. And then one of my other questions, as I was, obviously, on this commission for way too long, that I have zoning regulations from two thousand and two. But when did we amend and restate revised table three to be table three and table three B? Any idea? Okay? Before or after this became an improved lot? I'm personally suspecting before, but...
Can't answer that.
Okay?
Was that a substantive change?
Well, it presumably would be in the sense that we very specifically looked at the site and the coverages and the requirements of all of the residential zones by saying, let's change this table instead of it being residential and commercial to be just residential. I mean, I understand the argument that just amending and restating as a whole without revisiting the R eight or the R six zone keeps you outside of the definition or keeps you outside of the language that talks about a change to the zoning regulations. But if we in fact amended the table that is very relevant to this matter by restating or by bifurcating it, that would make it easier to state that this was a zoning change.
But for him, the ambiguity is so gnarled that the choice is clear at this point that we should not require a variance in this instance.
I couldn't agree more. We can split hairs till the council room, but who cares?
Yeah. Unfortunately, lawyers do that. I mean, it's an important point. I mean, you know, it gets back to, I mean, what we did is, we had one table and we split it into two, basically, right, George?
Were there other changes made at the time?
I don't think so. That's what I'm looking at.
And that's the problem, is it really substantive? But the way the statute, I think, reads is there's the word "change" in there. It has to be a change. And if it's just, now that's what's your definition of change, to Chuck. And when we talked, he said it's something more substantive than a formatting change. So if you take, you know, take one table, table five as an example, and say, okay, we're going to make it table five A and table five B, without any real substantive changes, just putting the commercial in one and the residential in another, I'm not sure that would really pass muster. Now, I do think what we ought to do, though, is study this thing in the zoning committee and figure out what we can do, you know, what's possible to do to make sure we don't run into a situation like this. Because David points out very correctly that, you know, what happens here is, one gentleman comes in, he wants to put a pool in and he doesn't need a variance. Then the guy next door comes in and says, well, I want to put the same kind of pool in. Well, you need a variance. It gives that kind of a result.
And it's because you built your house in nineteen eighty and you built his house in two thousand and ten.
And you say, well, wait a minute. So it's a funny result. I don't know if it's, doesn't seem fair and consistent to me. So there may be something we can do to rectify that. But certainly, I think the way the code stands now and the way we've not necessarily substantively modified it, I think this gentleman wins in terms of his interpretation and he doesn't need the variance. So I think what we would do is instruct, I guess, you and Reggie's absence to issue the building permit without the requirement for the variance, assuming that it meets all the other requirements for a building permit.
I agree.
Okay? So...
I was frustrated because it doesn't seem, you know, fair or in fact even really totally rational. But the state is the boss of us. And I think there might also be a way that we could, that we could clear this up that where the state would defer to our judgment if we handled this specifically. But we have not handled it and therefore we have, at the very least, an ambiguity, if not clear, plain language that shows that he's correct and therefore no variance is required.
Okay. So then, can I get a motion from someone to...
I would make a motion.
Except as a...
That we give him permission to do what he's got to do.
Without the need for variance in this case. Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I think we've sort of beaten this to the after. Any other discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm opposed.
I agree with the gentleman's interpretation of the statute. I think he's correct. I just feel that Chuck found the word substantive and it's not in the statute.
Okay.
It was a zoning change.
Okay. Well, I'm not... Okay. All right, so you're all set then to move forward. All right, we're going to go back to the agenda. The first item is the Russo Real Estate Site Plan at One Shoreline Drive. This was a site plan revision to revise the dumpster and add a chain link function. You might recall that we left this open because there was a wetlands issue. And I think he did go back and he got the wetlands prepared, right, George?
Reggie granted it, I think.
Okay, Reggie did grant it. So he did do as we asked, and I believe that was the only reason that we had left it open. And it looks like we do have a letter here dated February twenty-sixth to Mr. Keith Russo from Reggie, indicating that she has approved this. So if I can get a motion, which is on the back of it, we'll discuss it.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan revision for Russo Real Estate, One Shoreline Drive, map thirty-five, lot fourteen, as shown on site plan for new dumpsters dated twelve eleven thirteen, prepared by Criscolo Engineering LLC. This application is approved based upon the finding that it conforms with the zoning code.
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay, any discussion? I think we were okay.
Mr. Criscolo's here. I don't know if he wants to say anything.
No, that was perfect. I think it was, I mean, we saw it, everybody was basically in agreement.
It was just coastal waves.
So I think given where we are...
It'll look better and it'll be slightly safer.
Absolutely. I think I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, you're all set. The next one, Big Y Supermarkets. You might recall that had to do with the storage of propane tanks. My understanding, this is still with the fire marshal, they're still discussing it. So this is going to move off to the April second meeting. So if we can just get a motion to table it to four two?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? It's tabled. Me, too, but not actually. Next one is Towering Oaks, eight hundred Boston Post Road. Site plan approval, demolition of existing building, construction of two medical centers. This is the Fonsello property, as I recall. Okay, please.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Smith. I'm the managing member of Metrostar Properties. I am the development partner with Towering Oaks LLC in order of the properties. My offices are at Fifty Cherry Street in Manhattan, Connecticut. Tonight, we are seeking site plan approval for the demolition of the existing building and construction of two medical office building in the site. I'd like to introduce who's here with us tonight. Will Tucker from Towering Oaks is here. Dave Galabuski is the senior designer from TBA Design Group, is right here. Dave Sacco, project engineer, also from TBA, is over here. And then we have John Wicklow, the project architect, and Steve Allman from Alfred Benish Company, the traffic engineer. Keep it simple like that, David Starr, which is an overview, so, thank you.
Again, Mr. Chair, my name is David Galabuski, landscape architect with TBA Design Group. Again, from my office, Dave Sacco, Steve Allman, and John Wicklow. We're going to talk a little bit about the overall site plan, a little bit about the approvals that we received already. Dave will talk about the sperm drainage design. Steve's going to address the traffic. John Wicklow will talk about the architecture and then we'll wrap up.
Okay, thank you.
Just a little bit of orientation again, Big Y. Pinchback, Fonsello, Warmer, and Village Walk for your orientation. Again, the project is two twenty thousand square foot buildings, total of forty thousand square foot, medical office, retail. Some of the earlier history with our project in the fall, we went before the design review committee. A couple of times, we went back and forth with them. Primarily, we were seeking a front yard variance because we had to step the buildings back. The only place we could construct the septic system was in the front yard uptight to Route one. So we went back and forth. We studied subsurface drainage with the design review committee. They looked at inverts on sanitary design, as well as selection of plant material, lighting, and so forth. So we had a fairly extensive back and forth with them and received some good info and received their blessing. From that, we went to zoning board to seek approval of the variance again, to set the buildings back because of the need for the septic up in front. And we received that from Board of Zoning Appeals. And finally, we spent a couple of months ago, we were before wetlands. Then you are familiar, you were at wetlands, now you're in Z...
And Richard Meyer.
And Richard, you were, is that a demotion or a promotion?
I'm on both.
Oh, both.
It's two paychecks.
Since the time we left wetlands, we had, after seeking approval, and thank you very much, we had gone to the district because we knew we were going to be working at Route one, traffic district, DOT. And we wanted to make sure, before we came to P and Z, that we had gone through that. They basically asked for a turn lane, that Steve will talk about, and that brought us here, once we had gotten through what the DOT district is looking for. Again, two buildings, twenty thousand square foot up in front. We have two parking areas, approximately fifty-five spaces, almost evenly split on either side, with the rest of the parking in the rear. We tried to, we staggered the parking a little bit to keep as much as we could out of the buffer adjacent to the wetlands. On this approximately nine and a half acre site, we're primarily developing in the area that's already occupied and that's disturbed by the existing structure and some of the existing disturbed areas. You can see through most of the back of the site, it remains green and so forth. We have a very extensive landscape plan, a proposed landscape plan that accomplishes two things. It allows viewing from the post road to the site, to the architecture, to the tenants, but also provides screening that's sympathetic and compatible with the landscape massing and planting at Big Y. We went back and forth quite a bit with the design review committee on this. So we have a fairly extensive landscape plan that reflects some of the concerns, but also are interested in creating a highly attractive, heavily landscaped facility. In addition, our site lighting, which you see, which is a little bit further in the package, is all, it's in here, it's in the package. Complimentary lighting is sort of a colonial style. We include the photometric plan that shows no spill on adjacent properties. We include the photometric plan that shows no spill on adjacent properties. So basically following the overall guidelines and regulate, regulations of...
Just as soon as we... That was all reviewed by staff, and you're okay? So I don't want another situation like a CVS?
We're going to talk a little, just to make sure I understand. We'll get to that.
We'll get to that.
Okay. Yeah, no problem. So then, it's sort of a brief summary of the, of the site plan. Again, we have 190 spaces, and we show our calculation, 180 are required. So we have a couple extra spaces, loading spaces, and so forth. And what I'd like to ask Dave to do, because it's important, is just talk a little bit about the storm drainage design, and some of the unique green features that we've incorporated in the design. And then we'll have Steve talk a little bit about the traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is David Sacco. I'm a civil engineer with TBA Design Group in New Haven. The way that the storm drainage has been designed at the site, it hasn't changed, by the way, significantly since the last review that it's pretty much identically the same. What we're doing is designing a system to keep all of the runoff from the site below the levels, under their existing conditions. And what we're doing to achieve that is, at the front of the site, adjacent to Route One, there are two infiltration swales, vegetated filter strips that receive runoff from the front parking areas. There is a third vegetated filter strip in the rear, from this rear area. Beyond that, all of the other paved areas, the roof areas, will be directed to a structured parking, structured stormwater drainage system, a series of underground infiltration chambers in the rear of the site. Runoff from surface areas will be channeled to a grid separator, a cyclonic separator, engine infiltrators, and then overflow out into the existing wetlands in the rear of the site. The volume of retainerage that is provided is consistent with the Guilford Code in terms of providing a volume of storage of one to one inch of runoff from the site. At each storm level, from two-year through 50-year, the runoff is less than it is under the existing conditions. The overflow from these front filter strips will be directed to the rear of the site rather than overflowing into Route One. We have one, the one actually minor change from, from what was shown to inland wetlands, we have a series of infiltration chambers for the area between Village Walk and the site. That's going to be connected by an overflow pipe back to the, the onsite storm drainage system to minimize any risk that there's an overflow and any overtopping that could potentially affect the adjacent property. That was one change that, that Mr. Portley had asked for, and that's, and we addressed that. I think that's really the highlights of the, of the drainage system, and we have the uncertainty just... Oh, yeah. We did have back and forth with Mr. Portley, and he was content with this. His major emphasis was ensuring that we weren't putting any additional flow, or actually reducing the amount of flow that was getting downstream into the Pearl Street Brook because of the potential impact on neighbors. So what we are, in principle, and hopefully, reducing the impact that they are experiencing now as a result of all of the development here that is getting to, to that area.
Go ahead, please, ask a question.
You said the, the front filter strips have overflow. Is that underground piping right there, that little T shape that's going to run all the way down?
The way it works is that in, at the end of each of the filter strips, there's going to be a catch basin that's going to be elevated.
Okay.
So the swell will fill up, over top into the catch basin, and then go by, back to the rear of the site through this storm pipe and into the infiltration system.
And that's all gravity?
That's all gravity. Everything is, it's, it's then, the, the front of the site is being elevated in order to accommodate the, the subsurface sewage disposal system, which is why, right now, the natural grade of the site is predominantly flat. We have to grade up in order to get the, the sewage system in, septic system in. So that's why we have a grade in the front that's going to be directed toward Route One. We're going to pick it up in the filter strips, but then overflow it back to the rear, so that we're keeping the, the overall drainage pattern of the flow going to the wetlands intact.
And you're talking about a couple of feet of elevation right now from existing? It is pretty flat.
Yes. It is quite flat. Yes. It's about, it's about two feet to accommodate the...
The structure of the swell, of the, the septic system, and all that. And can you, is, is the Pearl Street stream shown on here where...
No, it's, it's not. This, the site...
Because there's more to the property than...
Oh, that's good.
Down to Boston. Just... Union Street.
Just wondered if you have an overall plot of that?
This is, yeah. This is the, the overall property.
Yep.
This is the area that was shown on the previous sheet, the existing Fonticello facility. Pearl Street Brook, this is Union Street down in the corner. So Pearl Street Brook is over here. Pearl Street runs roughly about here, and Pearl Street Brook is in the rear of the houses that front on Pearl Street.
Okay.
And that is, what happens is...
What happens of the rest, is the, the rest of the property subject to something else at some point?
A substantial amount of the remainder of the property is wetlands. And that wetland receives flow not only from this property, but also from...
Oh, and that's the back of the...
Big Y.
That's the best big word yet, right?
And the overflow from this is a channel that runs down the property line, enters a storm drainage system, and then discharges into the Brook going down behind Pearl Street.
And he, he thought you could have a significant, you could produce a significant reduction in that?
We're actually, it, it varies from storm level to storm level. At 50%, at the 50-year storm, we have a reduction on the order of three or four percent. At the lower storm levels, the reduction in volume is actually greater. So we're seeing this here in the storm drainage report, that we're looking at dropping at a two-year storm, for example, about a 20% less rate of flow that's going to get there.
Okay. All right.
Good evening. My name is Steve Allman. I'm a registered professional engineer with Alfred Benish Company of Glastonbury, Connecticut. You may have heard of us before as Porcell Associates, who acquired Alfred Benish about a year and a half ago. I did in Glastonbury for 26, 27 years. It's been a long time. I was asked to do a faculty study for this development. In order to perform the study, we did counts at Village Walk, Route One, and Big Y at Route One to get the finds in the area. First, we took a look at the site. We did a site by measurements along Route One. Right now, posted speed, about here to the east is 45 miles an hour. From around here, back this way is 35. The 85% power speeds on Route One are 41 miles an hour. We measured the site distances. They exceed 550 feet, which exceeds the site distance needed for 45 miles an hour. So there's more than enough site distances on the site. This development is a retail, medical retail center. There is no trip generation rate, the IT trip generation, for a medical retail center. What I did use was the Land Use 826, which is a specialty retail center. It's a little bit lighter than a shopping center, but it's more intensive than an office use or anything else. So it's considered, I consider that to be a worst-case scenario. During the morning peak hour, we're anticipating there'll be 312 trips generated by the site, and in the afternoon, 220 trips generated by the site. The capacity analyses of the three intersections, Village Walk, Big Y, and Site Drive. Existing Village Walk and Big Y operate at level service B, or signalized. In the both conditions, they operate at level service B until we'll change. The Site driveway, the left turns into the site, Route One operates at level service A during all conditions. The Site driveway operates at level service D in the morning, and just falls between D to E in the afternoon. However, that's not really an issue. The queuing is only about three vehicles in the afternoon, even though it's level service is, you know, C. We did present this to the Department of Transportation, District Three, Traffic Engineering, and the permits people. They had no concerns about the level of service. They requested that we construct a left turn bypass area on Route One in this area. That's not a full left turn lane. It's widening the shoulder to provide a room so that people, if someone's turning left, you can go around them. The design criteria for that is you do not move the center line. The center line's going to stay in the same place. You push all the widening away from the center line, so that if you're driving along Route One and you don't want to go on the project, you don't move, you don't have to shift over, you don't do anything. If there's a person turning left in, you have room to go by. It's a total of 22 feet wide there, which is, gives you 12-foot lane plus another eight feet, means 10 feet to bypass around. So that's considered adequate. The anticipated queues are one car, and if you're sometimes queue, you have one car waiting to get into the space. So that's what we've done. The department has reviewed this design. We constructed without impacting any, you know, any private property. Utility poles will all stay where they are. The only thing that they're going to want to worry about is, right now, there's existing curving along Route One here. They just want to make sure that we look at the drainage on that, so it doesn't fall off the site.
Okay. Any questions, please?
You, you talked about the level D and E. Where was the, where was that?
Coming out of the site.
On the way out.
On the way out.
Okay. And do you know how the, there's a signal in front of Village Walk, right?
Right.
Correct. There's a signal then in front of the entrance to Big Y.
Correct.
Are they timed in a way that presumably, if you want to get out of the site and take a, take a left, it's timed enough that maybe the red light will be at...
Village Walk and the...
No, because the, this, because you're not really centered.
Yep.
You end up with an imbalance flow.
Yep.
You really can't rely on that.
Okay.
To be honest, it's just, best you can.
Well, taking a left on the...
Any, any number of one is, it can be interesting.
Any number of places is a possibility.
But no, because of the spacing. If, if you're a mid-block, I'd say they'd give you a better shot at it, but since you're so close to Village, the concept park Village Walk, what's going to happen is, people coming this way, everybody were green, and then the platoons, but it's, you know, it's going to be hit or miss, to be honest.
Okay. Okay.
I hear you. I like those answers.
Next presenter, please.
Good evening. I'm John Luton, project architect with office at 50 Broad Street in Newport. Just run through the building quickly. You know how many there are, and I'll think they are. What I designed for you, and sort of showing you, are the raw spaces of the, the envelope of the building. First floor, I've considered ABAC compliance, egress requirements for multiple tenants, single-use tenants, and different variations of. Each floor is a little over $10,000 square feet. We have, the buildings are designed with two entrances. The site bears out the fact that there's parking on both sides. We want to make those attractive from, from all entrances. And those are located in the center of the building, at the center of circulation. The second floor just shows that in cases we may have corridors that allow for multiple tenants to meet in the requirements of the building code for egress. This sheet shows the typical elevations. We have two buildings. They're actually the same building, but rotated, so you get the front of one is the back of another, which you can see with the street scape. This is from the post road. So we have this gable roof, the center entrance section, upturned portion of the building with a separate roof line. And then the back of this building is the front of this building, which is the gable with the strong central access that's, that's marked by the, the portion. So, if you understand that, I can go back to it if you need to, but these are, this is one building, and it describes verbally, for the record, what, which I'll picture here. Larger-scale elevations depicting the overall height, it's 38 feet seven inches, with the midpoint roof at 31.3. Buildings are going to be wood frame, floor trusses, wood, wood roof trusses. And the, the materials themselves, starting from the roof, we're considering architectural asphalt jingles of a, of a sleek blend on all the roof surfaces. I designed the building, it's pre-fat, so we, we have the center section behind the front and rear roof, which is a shingle portion, is flat, which shows a location for all our HVAC units, so they're not on the ground, they're up on the building, so we don't have all that mechanical systems. So all the roof, the drip edges will have roof behind them, so it's a very positive...
Did you say that the roof is flat in the center?
Yeah. These, the section, this actually, the site plan shows, do you have that one?
I'm going to get that.
Yeah. You can, you can see this, this dark, these two parapits, which are actually shingle roofs.
Yep.
Well, the center of it is flat. So all the HVAC units will be concealed and up on that, that roof. But from the ground, it's, it's a normal...
I'm sorry, the, the center of that portion is actually lower than...
Correct. With roof drains.
Okay. Okay. So we're not technically looking at your extract, you know?
That's the idea. And they're not on the ground either.
Got it.
And then the other roof material we're proposing is natural copper for the porch, as I call them, for the entrances, front and rear. Asphalt jingles I talked about. The siding material is a cementitious horizontal siding, like...
Concrete clavering?
That's going to be, yes, yes.
Concrete clavering?
Yep.
That's what I call it.
Yes, exactly. Very durable, holds the paint very well. And we also introduce, at the entrances, a full brick in the air where we're walking in and out of the building, and also a portion of one of the roof lines to differentiate the architecture of that. I think that piece of the building has a brick base to it. Also, we have, we're going to use AZAC for solid PVC trim, which holds the paint very well for maintenance reasons. Crown moldings, water tables, things like that, will all be that, that solid PVC material. Other features are, you know, columns that are trimmed out in that, in that PVC, you know, with, with very traditional detailing, panels, and pilasters, and a few of those architectural features to kind of, to pull out some of the roof lines and, and to break down the scale of the buildings. The backside of that. They're also included some architectural site features in my set, which is the, the ground sign, which, I have two of them, I believe, is still the case. One for 800, one for 802. They're nine foot seven to the, for the peak, and about six feet to the actual field of the sign. They're, they're two piers with the, with all the verbiage in the, in the center. And they're double-sided, one for each building, so you can see from both directions.
Have they shown all of the site parts in order?
Yes. Okay. Well, maybe that's still under discussion. I apologize for misinformation. We have one that is in the center, and...
Double-sided. Perpendicular to the post road?
That's correct. Yeah. You can see it. I guess there was, at one point, talked about it. Yeah. So that, not the case. So, scratch.
800.
800, 802. Yeah. And also drew the refuse enclosure, for clarity. It's going to be a very durable reinforced block with the same brick that's at the front of the size of the buildings, that will veneer the block with solid PVC gates. I think I did show you this already. This depicts the, the street scape with both buildings at the proper scale of the spacing between the buildings. And it also had a color perspective, which more clearly, obviously, talks about the colors and how the... colors and how the materials are composed and what they look like in three dimensions. That's from the west, west side of the parking, looking east, with the parking in the foreground of the front building.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for the architect at this point? Okay, why don't we move along then, if there are no questions?
Mr. Chair, open it up to the...
Sure, let me, I have a few letters that I'm going to read into the record. The first one is from Dennis Johnson, Director of Health, dated March 5. The applicant's proposed medical office in retail buildings will be served by onsite septic system. Soil testing conducted on the lot reveals suitable soil conditions on the north side of the proposed buildings to allow for installation of septic systems adequate in size to accommodate the projected wastewater flow. The septic system will be installed in accordance with engineer design plans dated November 15, 2013 by Harken Engineering. The buildings will be served by public water. Based upon soil test results and site plan review, it is recommended that the applicant's proposed use be approved. We have a lengthy letter, which I'll try to read into the record quickly, from Kevin McGee, Town Environmental Planner, dated March 3. The applicant has completed the checklist to guide low-impact development best management practices and is utilizing the majority of the recommended practices. The site is located in an area designated by the P&amp;Z as a vulnerable local watershed, and as such, no properties located in the TS zone shall have a maximum impervious surface area of greater than 60 percent. The applicant's proposal meets the requirement with a maximum impervious surface area of 23.8 percent. The proposed plans show the development being constructed on the portion of the property already disturbed, and that a portion of the previously disturbed area will be turned into lawn. The stormwater system has been developed utilizing low-impact design principles. The stormwater management systems consist of three vegetated filter strips, catch basins, basins, and roof leaders which discharge into underground detention galleries designed to treat the first inch of rainfall. The stormwater system is also designed to attenuate off-site discharges to existing levels. The plans for the project, we have sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with 273-97B subsection 6 of the zoning regulations. The Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission at its December 11, 2013 meeting approved the regulated activity with conditions for a portion of the parking area and the underground detention area, including the outlet pipe and energy dissipator that will be constructed within the upland review area. Removal of the existing stormpipe that extends into the wetland and a utility sleeve to connect the upland area of the site within 100 feet jurisdictional review zone in wetland. An application has been submitted to the Inland Wetlands Commission for a modification of the commission's approval to allow for a turn lane to be installed on Boston Post Road. Commission will be receiving the application at its March meeting and will be taking action on the request at its April meeting. In order to make sure that the wetlands are protected, I recommend following conditions of approval to assure future compliance of the stormwater management system in accordance with Section 273-75F of the zoning code. Number one, upon approval of the site plan application, but prior to commencement of any work, the applicant shall execute an agreement and file a bond with the P&amp;Z to guarantee completion and maintenance of the work required by the approved stormwater management plan. Number two, a written maintenance and operation manual for all the stormwater management systems located at the subject site. The manual should provide provisions for yearly inspection, maintenance of the stormwater system, and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include, but not be limited to, weekly, monthly, quarterly inspections of the property for litter, monitoring the dumpster and outside storage areas, monitoring of the catch basins, removal of accumulated material, and non-native invasive species in the swales and the energy dissipator. The maintenance plan needs to provide a statement that the stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually so that inspection maintenance requirements may be modified and that any changes to the plan would be, would require the approval of the town engineer. Number three, an as-built drawing of the completed stormwater system prepared in accordance with Section 273-75F Stormwater Management Subsection 6 Construction. And number four, the applicant shall file a maintenance covenant on the land records as required by Section 273-75.F Stormwater Management Subsection 7 Maintenance Covenants of the Town of Guilford Zoning Code. Okay, questions from the commissioners?
I've got a question. The impervious surface is 23 percent, from what I just heard.
23.8.
23.8. There has to be a bigger piece of property than what's in that picture, isn't there?
Much bigger. There was, I think you showed that on that plot, plant.
Right, and that's the first part of the list.
I know what you're getting at.
That pipe's still low, isn't it?
This is the overall property, the piece that you're looking at, the previous drawing is this piece. This is the remainder of the site that connects actually to Union Street, which all three are here.
So, you're reserving the other part of that property for further development, is that correct?
There is the potential for future development on a limited part over here. This whole area is wetlands and...
So, potentially right now, that 23.8 percent, that's going to grow considerably once you start developing the other portion of the property?
There's a possibility that it, yes, it could grow.
But you'd have to come back here for approval if it was going to change.
And whatever changes we make, we'd still have to comply in terms of maintaining the off-site discharge to, at or below existing levels and all their aspects of it.
Thank you.
Can you, somebody just review with us quickly the lighting plan and the fact that you've met all the requirements, because we've had problems in the past with spill over to adjoining properties and aggravated home over.
These giant black things on P1, these show, this is the planting plan and the lighting, those show the proposed lights. There's a photometric plan, which I'm sure you've seen before.
Yep.
That shows the distribution of light, and again, these are 16-foot poles, LED poles, and these are LED fixtures, and they show the distribution pattern of the light. But if you read the levels as you fall out of the plot, so to speak, for lack of a better word, you can see how the trails off to zero at the property lines, Big Y, Village Walk, and you can see the zeros that are red along the property line. So, the photometric plan shows the light levels underneath, you know, at the, what candles, 2.4, 2.3, 0.8, 0.5, and then you get the end of the distribution pattern, and finally you get to the property line and it's zero.
Where is the nearest residential home or property? I mean, it's quite a ways away, right?
Quite a ways, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Quite a way, so, not even...
So, we're not going to get any spillage over there?
Do you have anything that shows what these light poles look like?
Yeah, I have a little detail sheet that shows, well, it shows the fixture type, which is sort of reminiscent of a, compatible with the architecture. And so, that, to me, was the most important. It's a fluted pole, 16-foot high, top on it to keep it from spilling above, so that's the general appearance of it.
Those are where, that's what you're lighting your parking on?
That's correct.
16-foot poles, CVS, they were taller than 16 feet?
I think they were, yeah.
I want to say 22 feet.
20.
Something like that.
This was reviewed by the Design Review Committee. I think those fixtures were looked at by them. I don't remember any particular comment about them.
No, they said, "Looks fine."
So, they don't, they don't direct down per se?
They do direct down. They do direct down.
They do direct down.
Because they have a top, so there's no, there's no lighting in the night, so to speak.
But you mean directing out.
He's directing down.
If I'm, if I'm standing on the street, I can look over and I will see the light.
You won't see the source of the light because it's, it'll be up inside the fixture.
Oh, it's up, it's inside the...
But if you look at the pattern on the ground, you can see it's in an oval shape.
Mm-hmm. All right. And so, it's downlight fixture.
Down.
Okay.
All right.
16 feet is better than 20.
Any other questions from any of the...
You're okay with all the conditions that were listed?
Well, having just seen them, you have a stipulation to the conditions.
This was reviewed by the Design Review, they had a number of comments. I think some of them, if not all of them, have been incorporated in the plan. The main issue for Design Review, and also the early part of this plan, was this question of setback. In this particular zone, there's a minimum setback, and, is that right, minimum setback? Yeah, and this project could not comply with that because of the desire to build a septic system up front. That's why the project is setback further, and that's why the variance was needed, which as you heard, was granted.
George, you mean a maximum setback?
George and Brian, can you, just at the next staff meeting, please ask that when there's conditions like this or reports, that they get out to the applicants ahead of time, because what's been happening is, I think this is the second time tonight, they got, I don't want to say blindsided, but they didn't have access to it.
No, these are, these are good conditions.
Oh, no, I'm not arguing about that, but I mean, in this case, they are, but there are times when people come in and they don't know that anything likely, so they don't have a chance to respond and prepare for it. So, I think, just make, bring that up at the next meeting, that please get this out to the people, you know, give them at least a couple of days before their applications are...
In George's defense, we discussed the substance, but not the written word of the potential if, of conditions.
No, no, it's not, I mean, it happens frequently, and I just want to make sure that you, not just you, but all applicants have the information ahead of time so they can respond intelligently, and then when we ask people, they can say, "Yeah, we're okay with those conditions," or not, "This is the first time I've seen it, I've seen it." You know, what do I do? Okay, other questions?
Yeah, I just have confusion. I thought that we on Planning and Zoning still had jurisdiction over the sleeve. I should probably mention to the commission that this was, this was my first, sadly for me, this was my first no vote on the inland wetlands, even though I, I'm very excited about every aspect of the project, actually. But the utility sleeve running across the wetlands into the R3 zone doesn't have a stated purpose. And on the inland wetlands commission, I voted against it because it, it really meets the definition of a true random action within a wetland under the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Act. But on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I still have concerns for the residents because of that sleeve.
What is it?
The residents that are on Boston Street and Union Street. It runs behind...
Okay, I'm missing something, maybe you can talk me through.
There's a, there's a utility sleeve that...
Is that where power's coming in, or telephone?
No, Mr. Chair, David Galbuzky, I guess we didn't mention it, not intentionally, but because it was a wetland-related issue working on wetlands, and for us, it wasn't related to the site plan, so it's an empty conduit.
Okay.
We were asked through the Design Review and meeting with staff and so forth, if I can back up and hold just for a minute, to clean up out here, some of which wasn't our property or our mess, but if you've taken site walker, you know that there's every bit of garbage in this wetland and in the water course. And so, the applicant property owner has said, "Okay, I'll bring some equipment out there, we'll clean it up." But also, we'll be out here constructing and we'll have some equipment, and we looked at this at some time down the road, because we own another part of this property, we may want to connect the two with data, with tell, with electric, with who knows what kind of utility. We don't have a plan right now, so we thought while we were out here with equipment, we would put an empty conduit.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, and what's the issue with that?
It's a, it's a four-foot trench through a, through a wetland. The inland wetlands commission put a set of requirements on it to minimize the impact of it, and they mentioned also that in certain ways, this wetland is already low-grade, particularly before they get stuck removing this trash from it, but the, this, the requirement that they remove the trash was not related to the conduit per se, it was related to the project as a whole. The applicant then came, came in and said they would also like to put in this utility sleeve, but the utility sleeve doesn't currently have a purpose. It could have any purpose. And I think that we still retain jurisdiction.
They can't hook up to it till we say so.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, we could certainly, at a later point, the applicant would have to come back to us, it would seem, in order to put something through it. But they also would have to come, but in my opinion, because it has no current purpose and it goes through a wetland, I think that we really typically, since this commission is charged with the health and welfare of residents of Guilford, there is a prudent and feasible alternative to the current stated project, and that is not to put through the utility sleeve. And since, since they may very well have a purpose in the future, I think that it would be appropriate for this commission to deny without prejudice, or include a, a condition on our approval, that the sleeve is denied without prejudice, and then when they come back to us with the data plan or the whatever other kind of plan.
Well, let me ask this question. Is the reason you're doing this now, is you're going to be back there anyways, cleaning it out, and you're going to have the equipment there? So, it's economies...
The cleaning and the equipment that digs the trench are not related in any meaningful way?
Well, I wouldn't say that. I would say that they are related. We're, we have the heavy equipment out there, we're not going to pick it up with garbage cans. We need some equipment, we're not driving through the wetlands per se, but there'll be a lot of, there could be dumpsters, there could be heavy equipment, there could be front-end loaders, any number of pieces of equipment used to access some of the garbage.
And you're going to be digging the four-foot trench with a front-end loader?
No, no, I'm just saying, if we're outside the wetlands, we're picking up garbage, we could be loading it into the bucket or something along that line. But we also would have trench X equipment on the job, we would have...
And so, you're saying while you're out there...
We're saying while we're out there.
And maybe, you know, it's less of a disturbance to do it all now than to have to go back again and disturb it again later.
Well, that was kind of the point.
Can we look back to, I think it's probably a very existing condition or... I mean, the second half of that. Okay. Are there greenhouses existing?
No, no, this is, that has all been demolished. There is actually one small shed, I think, is all that remains on that property.
The thing that says workshop?
No, it's a shed.
Shed, okay. So, all the other structures are...
Everything else is done. This is more current in terms of what the existing structures are.
So, there is access to Union Street there, are you accessing this site?
Nominally, there is access to Union Street. This is gated off and it is not typically used.
So, your construction, your construction activities are not going...
Anywhere near the...
On Union Street at all, because that's where the residential houses are.
Yes, there's, has its other side of that.
Okay. And how long are you going to install the utility sleeve? I mean, isn't, is that wetland right there?
It's across the wetland.
How do you do that, then?
Then it would be a matter of trenching across the wetland and treating all the same...
Okay, so it is, it's surface installation, you're not tunneling?
No, it's not, no, it's not.
You're not drilling it through?
Yeah, we go, I think there was a stipulation in inland wetlands that we go through the dry period, that we've got only a certain time of year that we can go in there, and a very narrow window within which to do this. It's estimated a two-day operation to do this, something along that line. When you go in, we do our trench X, we place the empty conduit and get out. Because from one end to the other, it's fragmites, that in the end of a growing season, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to know that we were even there. So, we're going through a fairly degraded area, you know, from a quality...
Right. This was approved by wetlands.
Right, was approved and, I mean, I don't...
And they put very specific conditions on it.
Absolutely, we stipulate to those conditions.
That's right.
And they're, they're correct that it's a low-grade and it could recover within a single day. The thing, the thing is just that, you know, this really operates as bundling, not for convenience at the construction level, which, because this is a profoundly separable part of the project, this functions as convenience at the application level to us.
So, what's, but what's wrong with, I mean, I don't understand if they're going to be there anyways, and they want to put it in, and they got inland wetlands approval, let them put it in. If it just sits there and never is used for anything, that's our problem.
There's no, there's been no way for any resident anywhere near this sleeve or this wetland to know that this is going to occur up to this point.
So, I mean, I'm just not sure what the problem is again. I just don't see the issue. Maybe I'm missing something, but, I mean, do you guys see what's...
I see absolutely nothing wrong with it.
I mean, they want to put it in, they got inland wetlands approval, it's their money, their pipe, it gets, never gets used, it never gets used if and when they want to make some construction over there. They have to come back anyways, and, I don't know, it just seems to me, you're going to be in there disturbing the wetlands, do it all at once so you don't have to go back and disturb them again. I don't know.
Well, there's a difference between disturb and disturbed in this case, what we're talking about... What we're talking about in one case is cleanup, in the other cases.
But they already have inland wetlands approval.
Yeah, I know, I already took my protest.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, they got the approval, so.
Yes, that's right.
Sure, absolutely, more questions, good.
Where on the site plan did I see dumpsters?
It's not a dumpster, it's a trash.
Why on the site did I see that?
See these little yellow things, called the trash and so.
Is that, is that in those?
It should be in the, in, I think it's sort of on. They're called.
Well, I guess we labeled it dumpster, but it's maybe a six-by-six or.
And that's.
Just two.
Up there's another one.
Okay, they're well away from the residential areas, so if the truck comes at four in the morning and pick it up, it's not going to be banging and noise, okay.
And where are we in, I mean, is, is a sign on the site plan or not on the site plan?
It's, it's, where is it? It was in, it's in the front island, this was, this was the sign.
Right.
I guess we went back and forth many times, but there was one stipulated to be in the front island.
Okay. So we need to make sure that that's in their site plan, because, I mean, aren't the, isn't the daycare facility here because they doesn't have a sign on their site plan? And daycare facility on Stonehouse claim?
What about that?
I'm sorry, it's on the landscape, so, proposed sign.
P1.
P1.
I'm not sure what you mean, what about the daycare center?
Are they coming in front of it because they have a sign? Somebody, somebody asked me in the coffee shop.
Oh, I don't know.
About that, and I said.
They're not on tonight?
No.
No, they're not on at all.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know about that.
That's right.
That's not a special day. Oh, we're receiving the application.
Right, and it's because they had, forgot to put a sign on their site plan.
It's, it's in a residential zone.
Well, it's a special permit, it's not a site plan revision. It's more than a site plan change.
I don't know.
But in any event, with regard to this application, we do show it there. And if there's going to be any changes, it'll have to come back for revision. All right, other questions?
I'm good.
You all set, David?
All right.
All right, why don't we get a motion?
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan application for Towering Oaks, 800 Boston Close Road, map 47, lot 22, as shown on the following. Patriot Medical Park 15, sheet dated February 14, 2014, prepared by TPA Design Group, Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates, and Parking and Engineering LLC. Architectural plans, medical office building, seven sheets dated 4/24/2013, prepared by John Woodfoe Architect. These are all the conditions. This application is approved with the following conditions. Prior to the commencement of any work, the application shall execute an agreement, file a bond with the Planning and Zoning Commission to guarantee completion and maintenance of the work required by the approved stormwater management plan. A written maintenance and operation manual for all the stormwater management systems located at the subject site shall be prepared and shall provide for yearly inspections, maintenance of the stormwater systems, and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include, but not limited to, weekly, monthly, and quarterly inspections of the property for litter, monitoring the dumpster, and outside storage areas, monitoring of the catch basins, the removal of accumulated materials, and non-native invasive species in the swells and engineering, engi, engineer, dis, dis, dissipator, sorry. Mouth full here. The maintenance plans need to provide a, a statement that the stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually so that inspection maintenance requirements may be modified, and any changes to the plan would require the approval of the town engineer. Three, as, and as build drawing of the complete stormwater system be prepared in accordance with section 273-75F Stormwater Management subsection 6 Construction. The applicant shall file a maintenance covenant on the land record as required by section 273-75F Stormwater Management subsection 7 Maintenance Covenants of the Town of Guilford zoning code. That prior to the issuance of a building permit, final landscape and building plans be reviewed by the design review committee. And that prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building, all site work be completed, or in lieu of landscaping, a bond be posted to ensure completion of said landscaping. This application is approved based upon a finding that with the variance granted, it conforms with the zoning code.
Do I hear a second?
I got a second.
Yeah, I have a second too, but.
Frank?
But the number five, the issue of the building permit, final landscape building plan review by the design review committee, hasn't been already approved by design review?
Or did you just have to go back, did they ask you to come back for something, or?
Well, they do have their approval.
Okay.
They usually, they usually have to see the final building materials and, and final details of landscape.
They usually sign off on the final.
Yeah.
But did they not approve it?
Well, it's approved, so.
They don't, they don't really approve, they recommend the approval to you.
Right, so what, all that has to happen is the applicant has to go back, review it with them?
If it's, if they, if, if it's determined that they don't need to do that, they've already reviewed the materials, then they, we won't let them do that. I can't remember, did they see all the cuts and everything, on the siding and the colors and everything?
Yeah, they, if you don't mind, they, they wanted to see some materials.
All right. All right, you're okay with that?
They were good with landscaping.
That's pretty standard.
Okay, we'll let you work it out. And it's for review, it's not like they can veto it or anything else.
It's a waste of time.
Well, sorry.
Still, give and take. All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
This is going to be great. I'm very excited about it. I think that the design is going to fit very nicely, and it's also going to connect things a lot more cleanly. Inland Wetlands was also excited about the upgrade to how the facility's hydrology is working, because it's, right now, it's just pavement from the 70s, 60s.
Excited.
I'm excited about it, I am.
I think it's, it's a good use of the property. I'm glad to see it upgraded from its condition today. I think it'll bring more kind of business that we want into town. It'll increase the tax base, but also not burden a lot of our other services. So, I'm in favor. All right.
Can I, can I quickly just clarify, are you adding a sidewalk to the post road, or is it already existing? I don't understand.
No, the sidewalk actually dead ends at both ends of the site. There's a sidewalk here, and there's a stud here. There's not a sidewalk, so we're connecting.
You are putting a sidewalk in.
Yeah.
It's kind of walkable, but.
Yeah. So again, there's a sidewalk a bit wide and a bit narrow. And then there's a one.
The whole side, there is one, it's walking.
So you're going to give a, a, thank you.
All right, I guess then, I mean, we'll take a vote. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye!
Anybody opposed? Okay, good, you're all set.
That was your loudest, ladies.
I'm going to be off on the next one, so I'm going to just rotate the chair. I'm going to ask Josh, here are the papers related to it, you take the chair, and I will leave the room, give you a holler.
Where are we at?
We're on Guilford Gate House West.
Guilford Gate House West, okay.
Site plan.
It's busy. Keeps me, keeps me going.
That was a very.
Do you want a third one? I am on a third one. No, you're talking. Did you mean? No, this is the back of it. This is the tree.
It looks like a Bob Man Geno.
Can I leave? Right there. I think you're in Antra, Austin Close Road, Guilford Gate House West. What, what we're trying to basically do is we're asking for a site plan revision. This, this basically, this model, the reason why I brought it here is because basically the architecture of the buildings are really not changing, except that the footprints are being reduced a little bit. And because we had five units basically in this, in this footprint, after further review and after it was all approved, the consensus was that this particular unit here, that was in the, was in the back, would be more kind of a undesirable unit compared to all the other ones that had frontage on this private drive coming in. Everyone would have access, except for this unit here, you'd have to actually go through, past these two units to get to this unit, and that would have a negative impact on the backyard of this unit, and a negative impact on the backyard of this unit. So what, the design, bringing back Bob Man Geno, and that can, can we redesign this so that everyone would have frontage on this private drive coming in? And he did, he came up with the plan, I believe. Everyone has a copy, or if you don't, I have an extra copy here. Basically, that's the new footprint, or. Did I do something here?
Yeah, now you're in trouble.
I do have the only edit here. I'm just wondering what happened in here, but this is the approved.
Here's the. Here's existing gatehouse.
So this is what we're proposing, this is what we're building. That's that unit in the back.
This is existing.
Yeah.
This is existing.
Yeah.
So what is he, excuse me?
This is, this is the property line. And then this is the storm? Septic. And the septic is unchanged? I mean, this structure is changed.
Correct, right, nothing, bedroom count hasn't changed, nothing's changed. Actually, we reduced the impervious surface by 2% by, by reducing it. And basically, that's the only change. How did this come about? I mean, you, you got this approved. And you looked at it, you said, what was I thinking? What? Just decided that in fact that rear thing was not a good idea? Yeah, further studying it and getting some marketing opinions and everything else, that was coming, coming up to the surface. People said, what's this thing? Right, and that would be a difficult, and we're trying to maximize the project so that, I mean, these are going to be residential condominiums, they're all going to be for sale, so we want to try to get everything working properly so that it would be marketable. Now, we already, since that original plan was approved, okay, we made the proposal that we were going to be building these decorative stone walls around the perimeter here on this bank, and also roughing in the road and, and prepping the site. And we were going to go forward and build this original plan. So we got to this point, and we said, well, before we go any further, it'd be smarter if we revised the plan and make it more salvagey. And that's the reason for the site plan revision. Just wanted to pass out these pictures of the stone walls that we did create, when we came here the first time, these didn't exist. So we built them, to give you an idea, as we're prepping the site. Are, are those walls shown on the new? Yes, they are. Okay, so all these little individual. This was the proposed. And these are, these are actually as-built on the site that you were doing. And that chimney is right there? That's correct. Is that a group chimney? That would be, in the back, that would be a outdoor fireplace that's designed to be on backyard of unit one.
Now, unit one on the, on the old approved plan versus unit one on the current plan, is it at the same, are the, is it positioned the same way at the elbow of the road?
Yes.
Is it to the east or the north, or is it, how has it shifted?
Yeah, it's basically, well, what we did here is we, well, two reasons why we want, the house, the university, we wanted to nest it in there properly so that the backyard would be facing some privacy issues here. So all of these have been tweaked a little bit, but basically, again, the same design, smaller footprint, it's like a jigsaw puzzle, just trying to get them all in there so that everything works properly.
And the coverage, this coverage was 2% more impervious?
Yes.
And what was it, what were the coverages for each of the units on this, did it say? I think you told it last time.
Squirt footage?
Yeah, the square footage.
They vary, but they average, it's a two-story building, and they average about 55 by script deep in the footprint. There's going to be no impact, we've already had all the wetland approvals for where we were with, where we were, where we were within the 100-foot setbacks. There's no change there, septic, nothing, nothing's changed in that. Basically, the only thing that has really changed is that we just reconfigured this a little bit and relocated this house, and it's the only, the only change. One of the issues originally, if you recall, you all here, you remember the, the fire marshal had some concerns about fire protection, and we solved that problem by making some accommodations for them and also giving them a pull-off here for this fire pond, so they have access to this. We already built that access, it's already there. And we went to the fire department, and Wayne Bertry has a letter here, I have a copy of it, I could read it. Basically, it said, received the site plan, the Guilford Gate House West, Chief Hershaf and I discussed the revision and feel that although the previous site plan met all the fire department needs as proposed, the revised site plan appears to bring additional operational access and is likely to promote a safer environment for the occupants and firefighters nearing an incinerator.
He's particularly referring to our unit, he's especially referring to unit four in that case.
Yes, yes. So by eliminating this, which was okay, we improved, improved fire protection.
There are, there are a couple other letters in the record that should be read, I suppose. This one is from Dennis Johnson. The application, applicant's proposed use will require construction of a common septic system so that the fire is a natural use. So tests conducted at the site on July 17, 2000 revealed, suitable condition for installation of a septic system as depicted on engineered plan date August 5, 2013 by Harp and Engineering. It is recommended that the applicant propose use be approved with the following condition, the septic tank and pump chamber location indicated on the approved septic system be redesigned and relocated outside the 100-foot regulation inland wetland zone. The design engineer has verified to staff that it is possible to construct a septic system components entirely outside of the wetland, regulated setback found here. And then there's a letter from Kevin McGee. Revised site plan and sanitary, sanitary parcel A, Guilford Gate House West shows changes to the build, building driveways and septic system configurations. A portion of the modifications are located within the 100-foot wetlands review area and would require approval by the inland wetland commission. According to information provided by Harp and Engineering, the proposed changes decrease the impervious area by 2% and provide a slight reduction in stormwater runoff. The previous conditions of approval by the inland wetland commission and planning and zoning commission provide for erosion control measures which are designed to protect the adjacent swamp. This was dated March 5.
March 5, most of, most of the erosion preventative have already been put in. We've actually gone above and beyond, rather than putting steel fence, we've actually put retaining stone walls to protect between the roadway and the wetland area. And, and they've already basically been in, this one here is almost completed, but it'll go right to the, to down here.
Then the last letter to us is from James A. Portley, town engineer, dated March 5. And this revised, revised plan and discussions about potential future expansion of the single-family residence to the east has caused a heightened concern that what is shown as a proposed driveway is in fact a road that will serve a new community of residents that will expect the, that will expect the appropriate infrastructure. Development of Gate House West provides a good example of. Development of Gate House West provides a good example of an attractive multi-use site. There is no question this will be confined into the residential zone, but it is recommended that the not-so-glorious details and standards of the good engineering designs and construction be overlooked as this project proceeds. It is recommended that if this revised site plan, parcel A, is approved by the commission, it be stipulated that prior to issuance of building permits for any of the buildings, an engineered plan profile for a twenty-two-foot wide roadway including details of pavement sections, drainage and structure be developed for review and approve of, approval of the engineering department. As with all residential developments, inspection by the town staff will have to be completed to assure compliance with the plans prior to issuance of occupancy permits." That is James Portley.
Do you have a concern about that?
What was his, what's his point here?
Well, you may recall there was, you may recall the zone change application that Mr. Anatra submitted a few months ago. Envisioned the creation of more dwelling units off of the continuation of this road. That's what, that's what Portley's referring to. If that development were to occur, if there were gonna be another ten units, which I think is the proposal, then that would require, in his opinion, a slightly wider road, road construction than the one that was initially proposed for these five units, twenty-two feet rather than eighteen.
More explicitly meaning road requirements rather than driveway.
I would respectfully request that James Portley's evaluation, although it would be accepted if those two additional lots will rezone, which they're not, they're already zoned, so we can't do what we'd like to do, and to put a condition on this project in anticipation of something that's not approved, a matter of fact that was even rejected by this committee when we applied for TS two, and make that a condition of this, especially after it was already approved and we already put this driveway in, it's already constructed, to, to require an engineered plan profile, basically building a town-type road coming in here with bonding and everything else is completely premature.
And you'd have to come before us again, at any rate.
The thing is, is this may not go any further than what it is, and that's, that's what we're talking about. I'm not talking about the future. If you can, if you wanna prove the whole package with the zone changes and everything else, I'll go along with this, but...
Help me to understand, what do we, what do we think he means when he says there is no question that this will be confined into the residential zone, but it is recommended that the not-so-glorious details and standards of the good engineering designs and construction be overlooked?
You'll have to refer to Jim Portley. Poetic.
I'm still trying to...
I think I've got it.
You do? I don't know what he means.
I have it too.
I don't know. So, he's, he's saying that maybe we should make it a road road now instead of a driveway road now, but it seems, it seems like that's more appropriate if the, if the R seven and R eight zones that are at the end of this get rezoned to something else and the units get put in.
We can make them redo that if that is the case.
And then we would require that and then there'd be money in it.
Let me get, let me get two different questions. One is to George. If we, well, if the parcels to the, whatever.
West?
Sure. If...
Or east.
It's one or the other, right? To the east. We could, and there were additional development residential, and we said, gee, the road, the access is not adequate. Can we impose a condition that an improvement happen on a different parcel?
C ingress, C egress.
I would think you could, yes, that's the access to it.
And then a practical question, I understand where you're coming from because I fully appreciate your frustration with the current situation. The, if you build the proposed driveway as is and then you have to go back next year and widen it by four more feet and put in drain?
Well, this is why I'm kinda surprised because when I first spoke with Mr. Portley, this wasn't an issue. He just said, you know, he says, "It might be a good idea if you make the road twenty-two feet wider rather than eighteen." He says, "Because if you do expand in the future, that would take care of this development part." I said, "Yes, I don't have a problem with that, just adding a couple of feet on the road." But this is different. This is an engineered plan, plan profile for a twenty-two-foot road engineered, this is a town road that he's putting in here, and I don't wanna be burdened that I have to build a town road for a driveway coming in behind the plaza. It's just not, it's not reasonable. And of course...
Can I ask a question now or not?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, Vic, I...
Town staff.
No. Town staff.
Of course.
No, you're not, you're not, I mean, at this point, I mean, do I...
I mean, Vic, I mean, this is condominium, so effectively this is a private road, or at least I thought it was. Is it your intention, it wasn't like it was your intention to transfer this to the town, so I mean...
I don't think Jim's recommending that it become a town road.
Nobody wants to be built like a road.
Right, built like a town road.
Big, big difference.
Not be owned by the town.
Yeah, clearly.
Okay, that's why I was just trying to clarify that because I was a little confused and, and then to the point where those back lots, while they're a dream right now, they might not happen. Exactly, I mean, this is a test phase, if this works and is successful, then we're gonna try to do zone change and continue it, but it may not, this may be, this is...
Are there any more questions?
No, it's voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan revision for Guilford Gate House West, two-six-one-four Boston Post Road, map eighty-three, lot twenty, is shown on site plan modification Guilford Gate House West, parcel A, prepared by Harkin Engineering, dated eight-five-thirteen, revised to two-twenty-eight-fourteen, revised site plan parcel A Guilford Gate House West, dated February twenty-five, two thousand and fourteen, revised three-five-fourteen, prepared by Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates and architectural plans and models prepared by Bob Vangino Architect. This application is approved with the following conditions, and all three of these are...
No, I think that number two, he doesn't mean number two.
Number two or one?
And that's the one we're talking about.
Yes.
Number one, that prior to issuance of the building permit, our final architectural landing and landscape plans be reviewed by the design review committee, and number two, that the septic tank and pump chamber for the approved septic, septic system be relocated outside the one-hundred-foot regulated inland-wetland zone. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code.
Second.
Any, any comments or discussion?
Kevin also asks, doesn't really state this too clearly, but he asked that the previous conditions of approval of the inland-wetlands commission and planning and zoning commission also apply.
They don't go away though, right?
Yeah, so move, so move this condition, so move this condition three.
You gotta reset.
All right, any discussion, comments? If none, then I'll have a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Come on in, Mr. Chairman.
So is, is two, is...
Two's gone, don't worry about two.
Number three is number two.
Right, so they might as well have changed.
Why don't we change the, while they're moving the model, we'll change the... And then we'll go back on the record. Okay, we have a number of applications to receive. We'll start with the special permits. First one, Guilford Center for Children. This is a special permit for freestanding sign at preschool in a residential zone, received and set a public hearing for April second.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Amity Construction, Benton's Knoll Colonial Road. This is a revision to a special permit for the installation of in-ground pools and surrounding paver patios, received and set a public hearing for April second.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a CAM site plan for Deborah Weedy at one-sixteen Seaside Avenue. This is a revision to a previously approved CAM site plan for a new deck configuration, received and set a public hearing for April second.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got one site plan for CVS at ten-fifty-seven Boston Post Road. This is a site plan approval within the existing CVS space to create a medical diagnostics minute clinic, received and set a public hearing dated March nineteenth.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it looks like the next item is a letter that we have received from the regional water authority about some property which it looks like they want to acquire and they wanna take advantage of the Department of Energy Environmental Protection Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program so that they can request funding assistance to acquire this property. They're asking for our letter of support for this purchase and protection effort with their application. We have a map, looks like the property's off Great Hill Road, the Dandio and Tico property, which appears to be outlined in red is what they're looking to acquire, and they have existing property that's reported on here. So we're not obviously planning to use this property for any known purpose at this point with the town, so I personally don't have any problem supporting this since it'll result in the preservation of this and protection of the watershed. Any discussion or questions? George, do you know anything more about this that you can fill in?
This is, this piece of property has been kind of on their radar screen for a long time. I know the land trust was also very interested in it at one time. I'm personally very familiar with it, I used to live up there. Boy, that's where...
Not aware of anything the town was planning to do with this property that we would be...
That's really what we're saying.
It has to go, Dandio was thinking of trying to develop, and he's developed a subdivision on his Walnut Tree Lane, and you know, he kind of had his back mount, if they, if, in fact, that person's still even around, had in mind developing this at one time, but I don't think they're, have any immediate plans for it. I don't think there's any town, there would be any reason for the town to object to it. I think it fits within overall open space goals and it's fairly important to the water company or they wouldn't be trying to acquire it.
This looks like it might have an issue trying to develop, I mean, it's only twelve percent of it is, looks like it's wetlands, but the problem is you got fifty-one percent of the properties noted as having slopes equal to or in excess of fifteen percent.
Some of it's fairly steep.
Yep, and eighty-eight percent shallow to bedrock soil, so it's gonna be tough to get a septic system in some of those locations that we're here.
The one and only deer I ever killed in my lifetime was killed on this property.
Bow and arrow or rifle?
No, rifle.
What kind?
A bird.
Winchester two-seventy or a joke?
Thirty, thirty.
Thirty, thirty, okay. All right, any, any relevant discussion on this application here?
Why would we say no?
I don't, I can't think of any reasons.
They just want us to verify for deep that we really don't care.
Yeah, so I guess what we would ask for is just a motion to ask George and staff to prepare a letter in support of this request for a grant.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Looks like we received a mandatory referral with regard to the construction of a Chittenden Trailhead Boardwalk to the town beach located off Seaside Avenue. This is addressed to me from Joseph Maza, first selectman. The board of selectmen approved the following items, subject to mandatory referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, section eight-dash-twenty-four. I am forwarding the following request for your consideration at the May fifth meeting, mandatory referral, construction of Chittenden Trailhead Boardwalk. I guess this is to the town beach located off Seaside Avenue. George, are you familiar with this at all or...
Yes, you are too. You approved the site plan for this project a couple months ago.
This is like quite a CAM application or something.
Yep, there's a CAM.
This is the mandatory referral part of this.
All right, so...
Why is it getting bounced back to us? I'm sorry.
It's not getting bounced back.
No, this is separate.
State statute that says if the town does certain things, planning...
Even though we already have.
You didn't actually approve it pursuant to eight-dash-twenty-four.
Yeah, this is...
You just approved a coastal site.
When do you get a chance, just look up eight-twenty-four?
They could have done it all at one time, but I don't really think of any...
Referrals that the town has to make to us for some of these items. Okay, can I get a motion? To approve the mandatory...
Move to approve the mandatory referral of the boardwalk.
On the back there's a...
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a real one. Okay, voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a mandatory referral, construction of a Chittenden Trailhead Boardwalk on town beach located off of Seaside Avenue. This project is in accordance with the plan of conservation and development and it is approved pursuant to section eight-dash-twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Okay, here's a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing ended, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. We have a bill from Shore Publishing in the amount of a hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-two cents, if I can get a motion?
I move that we pay the bills.
Okay, all in favor? Let's pay the bills. And we have, you should have gotten a copy of the minutes emailed to you for the February nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen regular meeting. I'll ask if anybody has any updates, changes, modifications, etc.
I think you put me down as like vice chairman or something like that. I had some corrections, I can't remember what it is. You promoted me or something.
Maybe you were the acting vice chairman.
I might have been acting vice chairman since Tom wasn't here, I don't know. But I think I was here, so I don't know. But in any event, other than that, is there anything else that needs to be updated or changed? Okay, then I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes of the two-nineteen, two thousand and thirteen meeting.
So moved, second.
Okay, any further discussion? We'll take a look at that for what David brings up and if necessary, correct it.
Demote, demote, Commissioner Grigsby.
We'll highlight it, underline it, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, having no further business before this commission, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.